Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, May 14. We are coming to you this evening from the Savage Center. In attendance this evening, I have myself, my colleagues Teresa Stewart and Judith Bromley. And remote, we have Joan Giblin and David Hilt will be joining us hopefully shortly. Can I ask everybody that is in attendance to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So just as in a, by way of an update, we actually have already met this morning. This evening at 6:30 for an executive session, so we have adjourned and come over to the open session. First order of business in open session is our approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes in your packets this evening. We have the April 30th executive session minutes and the April 30th open session minutes. Is there any questions on the minutes in the packet? Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Judith, do I have a second?
I wasn't there, so I'm abstaining.
I'm getting a thumbs up from Joan, so Joan is seconding that. Any other questions? All those in favor? Say aye. Oh wait, I'm sorry. I have to poll because we have a member who is remote. Sorry, I know, sorry Joan. So I'll start with Joan. Joan? I saw you unmuted and I saw your lips say yes. Judith?
Yes.
I'm a yes and Teresa?
An abstain.
An abstain. So that is three, zero, one abstention. That's kind of why I skipped you. Okay, so next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Luft, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not.
Wonderful. So the next item on the agenda is the warrant report. And so this week, I signed warrants in the amounts of $1,950,575.62, $28,973.1 cent, $35,426.58, and $4,281.8 cents for a grand total of $3,648,699.28. Are there any questions on the warrant report this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move right along. Next item on our agenda is public comment. As a reminder to the public, you can access public comment in several ways. You can call the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting to get a remote link. If we were having a hybrid meeting, you can also call the superintendent's office by noon to get your name put on our list to speak in person. You can also come to our meeting at the Savage Center and sign in at that time. So is at seven, no, sorry. Is anybody in the audience here for public comment this evening? Seeing none, Mr. Luft, did anybody pre-register for public comment this week?
They have not.
Wonderful. So at 7:15, I will declare a public comment closed. Okay, so that moves us right into our next section, which is appearances. We have several appearances this evening, so we will start off the evening with our Student Advisory Council's final update of the school year. Represented by one.
Thank you all for having me. My name is Yash for the last Student Advisory Council Committee Meeting of the year. This slideshow is just basically the wrap-up and like what we did overall. So year in review, we conducted interviews and surveys with students about academics, transition points, and student support systems. Collected data on emotional preparedness, academic readiness, school highlights, and involvement in activities focused on key transitions. This was the main one, bread and butter. Elementary to middle school, middle school to high school, high school to college, and career readiness. Our key findings, what we heard from students, were transitions need more structured support at every level, whether it's fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 12th to college. Students consistently asked for school tours, Q&amp;A sessions, a clear communication to reduce anxiety and help make kids comfortable. Emotional wellness is a growing priority for students. Many students don't feel emotionally prepared when transitioning. They suggested safe spaces like chill zones, buddy benches, and more consistent counselor access to help them. Hands-on, engaging learning makes a difference. Schools using interactive lessons, experiments, and cooperative learning methods receive positive feedback. Students enjoy learning most when they were actively involved. And then students want to feel more informed and involved. From ninth graders confused about AP classes to middle schoolers unsure about clubs, students want easier access to information and more opportunities to get involved. And then our plan for next year is gather feedback on the transitioning system. So we'll see how that plays out. Discuss possible different formats to run SAC in the future. And then identity focus areas for 25, 26 school year at the first meeting in fall of 2026, 2025. And yeah, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Yash?
No, I just, I read your presentation. I was very impressed. It was a great job collecting information and gathering and disseminating. That's been great work.
Yeah, just great job this year. Very, very insightful, lots of good information. Every time you guys came, it was really very, that's another word for insightful. I'm trying to be like, you know, pull out my thesaurus in my brain. But it was, it was really helpful. It was really, there, I'm just going to go with that. It was really helpful to hear from those different voices and to see what they really needed. And I think that we've heard that too, feedback from the staff, that they thought, they found it really helpful. So definitely a good job in choosing that path this year and really sticking with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Yash. It's been great working with you this year and last year. Hopefully you run again and hopefully you'll be with us next year for your senior year. And I look forward to the planning ahead and the discussion of what might we change and what's really working and just how can we continue this partnership? Because I really value working with the students and hearing from you, so thank you.
Something that was brought up actually in our student council meeting, like as a whole, is all the officers and like our advisors, they're like, we don't get enough student like voice out there. And so hoping, hoping we can get more of that going.
Like directly to the school committee or in general?
School committee changes, like, I don't know, getting more with administration, just like helping that gap.
Yeah, no, and you guys can be instrumental in helping to bridge that gap for sure. I mean, we definitely want to take a look at what worked well this year, what could be improved on. What, you know, I think we kind of talked about that a little bit in our last SAC meeting. So we definitely want to continue that conversation about what can, what can be, how it can be better. We've only been doing this now for a couple of years, so we will.
Yeah, it's our third year.
Third year, yeah. So, and I feel like it does get better every year, but we could obviously improve for sure. So as you guys are going through, we will find ways to, I think we should find ways to make sure we poll the current SAC to find out like what they would recommend going forward.
And the elections are in June, right? For 10th, 11th, and 12th, and then 9th grade in the fall.
Also, as a student advisory committee group, we had the opportunity to interview and like discuss future candidates for next year's principal. And Drumroll, please.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, not you.
No, you're gonna, you're gonna do it. Wait one sec.
But before you, before you do that.
My bad.
Before you do that, I want to thank all of you for the work that you did this year. I loved having the advisory here. I loved going, I loved everything you've done and brought, you know, and a lot of the input that you've given has gone into kind of the plans for next year and transitioning into the middle school and the stipend committee work that we're doing to try to identify some stipends for the elementary and all those things. So the work that you've done is making an impact and I just want to thank you for that. Madam Chair, I would, agenda item that is in my report, that actually is in the later report on a vote to approve a contract, I would appreciate if you could bring that forward.
Can I, can I name the contract without naming the person?
Yep.
Okay, great. So earlier today, when we met for executive session, we had an opportunity to look at the contract for the new high school principal. And we did vote on that in executive session, so to make it official during our, our public session, we are going to vote on that again. So does anyone, anyone have any questions, concerns on that contract? Do I have a motion to approve the high school principal contract?
Motion to approve the high school principal contract for July 1, 2025.
Okay, moved by Teresa, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other questions? I will poll Joan. That's a yes. Her mic's not working. Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes unanimously, four to zero.
And now Drumroll.
Mr. Rain, student principal, congratulations. Forgot how structured you guys do it. You gotta get the votes, then only you can.
We wanted to make sure it was like official, official.
I will just say, before you, before you start, I thank you again, Yash. Mr. Rain was up against some incredible competition in the interview process for a high school principal, and she absolutely nailed it and knocked it out of the park. Norwood is incredibly lucky to have her, and we are incredibly lucky to have her sitting here before us today with an approved contract. And I just want to thank you for going through the process, seeing your confidence level, seeing what you did to not only get the people that you already had, but really show the people that weren't sure that you were going to be an incredible principal for Norwood High School. So I'm just thrilled to have you here tonight, Cindy.
Thank you very much. I feel like I'm the lucky one. You know, the, the kids that we work with every day are amazing and they make our job easy. In particular, our Student Advisory Council, they're amazing. And I, you know, I want to thank everybody for their belief in me and the support. It is truly a privilege and a responsibility that I am very grateful for and I do not take lightly. So I hope that I can make everybody proud and continue to lead Norwood High School in the amazing traditions that we've started, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I'll just briefly say, Mrs. Rain, congratulations. Superintendent Luft, I think it's absolutely the right decision, so good job. Mrs. Rain, in the eight years that I have been in this seat, I've had the privilege to work with you on a number of initiatives as a community member, working with you on many things. And as a parent, you've been the assistant and associate principal for one of my children, and now you'll be the principal for my other child. So in all of those roles, I'm really happy and proud of you, so congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, a progression. Because I have, because I have to go there.
Uh-oh.
So I've known Mrs. Rain for a very long time. Before, her name was Mrs. Rain. And she was my Spanish one teacher. And we went to Spain together.
What?
Uh-huh. Yeah, she's like, what? So just seeing the whole progression all the way through, from when I was a dumb kid to a freshman in high school, up to now, you know, sending with my second about to be a freshman in high school, and just all that you've done at the high school has been like ridiculously impressive. There has not been a bad word about your appointment around town, like not a single bad thing. It's just, it's a testament to your care for the students and just, you know, for the position and just, you know, your dedication. So really, congratulations.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for my first year of teaching. You all taught me, you all taught me how to teach, for sure. I was 22 years old and walked into a classroom and, ah! So thank you for, for, for all of that. And, you know, I'm just, again, I'm just so blessed for all the experiences that I've had throughout my career, so.
Thanks, Cindy. Can I borrow your pen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yash.
Thank you, Yash. All right, so Dr. Galligan, you have a hard time following that one up. So Dr. Galligan and Mr. Rain are here to talk to us about the high school handbook changes. So back to business.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. We'll be super brief tonight as we present a summary of changes for the 25, 26 Norwood High School Student Handbook. Nothing overwhelmingly significant in terms of changes, but we will highlight the ones that we went through. As always, so I'll refer to the document that you all received, that's the summary of changes document. I think that's the easiest way to move through it. The handbook is pretty lengthy, so this is probably the quickest way to get through.
Dr. Galligan, if I may, so in your folder, in your school committee drive, you'll see the actual red line version that Dr. Galligan put together.
So as always, we do have housekeeping updates. We just ask for kind of your overall blessing as we move through changes in introductory letters, the table of contents, that's the last thing we do, formatting changes, dates, letters, things like that. And some of those still need to happen as, as the year moves along. Kick it over to Mrs. Rain.
And on pages 15, 16, you'll see our credit recovery updates. So we have an updated policy to align with our NHS offerings. It's a clear definition. We've removed some of the language that used to be in place from before COVID and practices that are really no longer best practices. We've updated, and again, updated, the outdated references on summer school requirements. We used to have certain thresholds that had to be met, and we've moved away from that. If you failed, you get the opportunity to go to summer school to try to recover credit.
Item number three has several changes under the attendance section. So these are on pages 26 through 28 of the student handbook, so I'll cover them quickly one by one. The first one, letter A, has just changed the phrase "half-year courses" to "2.5 credit courses." All of our courses are full year. They just are either worth five or 2.5 credits. Letter B, we changed the required notification for excessive consecutive absences to call for an exit interview with students and families. Changed that. The old language was 15, it's actually 10 days per state law. So we've updated that to make sure that that is in accordance with state law and in agreement with state law. Letter, item C, we added extended absences for travel language. This is something that we see from time to time with students and families, and we want to provide guidance for them on what they're supposed to do if this happens, if it needs to happen. So this provides them with direction to contact the assistant principal, in which case we'd go through the options that the student and the family have if they're going to be traveling for an extended period of time, as that is not an excused absence. Letter D, we've added language for medical reentry meetings after extended absences for any type of medical absence. So this asks that students and families meet with us for a reentry process if they're absent for more than a week due to medical reasons. This could be a physical medical reason, a mental health reason, any of the above. And this is all in the name of meeting together, providing whatever support is needed for the student upon reentry, and having medical documentation that usually provides some insight to the school on what would be appropriate to help the student transition back to school. And letter E, added languages for students and families around proper dismissal procedures. This talks about dismissals. There's really three ways that it can happen. Either you're guardian or approved person on your contacts is going to write a note and dismiss you, come in person or dismiss you, or the nurse is going to dismiss you. Other methods like text messaging your family are not going to dismiss you. All right, kick it over back to Mrs. Rain.
We clarified language within the cell phone policy to align with our established practices and protocols. So there's a designated cell phone storage area in each classroom, and cell phones need to be there. On page 36, we added or clarified a reference to the misuse of substances under our code of conduct, and we included over-the-counter, you know, products that can be misused by students. On page, pages 58 to 61, we updated the technology responsible use policy per the district policy. That's a district-wide update.
And the last one is in our athletic handbook, which is an appendix in our general student handbook, and that's on page 80. We've updated and included a policy on taunting per MIA language and current NHS practices. So these are guidelines regarding prohibiting taunting and explaining what would happen if that did occur for both participants in the athletic event, so student athletes, but also spectators who are students at an event, just in the name of transparency and clarity, so that everybody knows what to expect. So those are all of our changes for the Norwood High School Handbook. And we're happy to answer any quick questions you might have.
Any questions about the handbook?
Maybe a question more for Superintendent Luft, the medical reentry meetings, is that something we're looking at district-wide?
So we are sitting with the, with the elementary and middle school folks and talking about the handbooks now. So Dr. Galligan had to be here this evening, so we wanted to make sure he did this one. We have not had the conversation to get it all, all out there, but it makes a lot of sense to add this language in there, just because to have those conversations with families about the whys and what kind of support are there. So it's certainly something that we could do.
Yeah, and Dr. Galligan and Mr. Rain, is that with the principal team that has the meetings with the students or guidance counselors or?
It depends on the circumstances. But we have like a form that we have, that we've been piloting with, like, is it a disciplinary reentry, is it a medical reentry, and who has to be there? So basically, for medical reentries, because this is specific to that, this, it would be members of the students' team. So an administrator, a counselor, a social worker if necessary. If the student is on an IEP, then you would have representatives from the IEP team there as well, so.
Okay, so you've worked with the student services?
School nurse, yeah.
Yeah, so like the student services office is aware of this change?
And there are certain requirements too in law, right? When you talk about medical absences for an extended period of time, I don't know the date, but you have to actually do a referral, right? To look at special ed services, possibly all those kind of things. So this would help, right, kind of in that process?
Okay.
I think so. It's certainly something I'll bring up with the other principals and talk about.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I was just hoping we were looking at it comprehensively throughout the district, so that if we're doing it at the high school, we're doing it elsewhere.
Happy to. And obviously, the situation you want to avoid is a student just arriving back that may have some needs that they didn't have before the medical absence.
Right.
And nobody knowing about it, right? That, that's, that's what you want to avoid.
Makes sense. I will comment that I like the taunting section. I just feel like with sporting events being what they are and just a lot of things that have been in the news in the last probably year or two around things, around Massachusetts, it's just, you know, you hope that if it's in there, at least it's a little more like it's already in play because of the MIA, but having it in the handbook just makes it more prominent, and I like that because, yeah, a lot of people with their kids, if they don't play sports, really not paying attention to the MIA taunting rules. But if it's in your high school handbook, it's a little more obvious. I did have a quick question, so this is in draft. And so once we give approval, might there be one more quick publishing QC run through it? I noticed like a couple of little pieces where it looks like a word got cut off because it was probably being edited and then just didn't get put back in. So I just would caution on that.
Did it look like, like it got cut off the side of the page?
No, it's like in the middle, like one word should say like every, it just says EV.
Oh, okay. Yeah, if you notice a spelling error, let us know.
Because it's in a PDF, so I can't, you know, yeah. I was just like.
Covered in item one, so.
Yeah.
We, we sometimes find some things and we do our best, absolutely. Please let us know and we will fix that rapidly.
I think it might have been Ms. Drummy who told me when I was in high school to read it backwards.
There you go.
So that you read every single word, because your brain will just read it correctly forward. So if you read it backwards, you have to read every single word. I know, that's a really strange one, but you're not going to read 82 pages backwards. So any other questions?
I have one, one quick comment on the, on the extended absentee of travel piece. And this is something that we're starting to put into place in Norwood for those kids, and this is district-wide, for those kids who are traveling with their families for an extended period of time, like internationally over the winter, you know, some, some could be three weeks, for example. We're actually starting a process where we're asking them to file homeschool plans while they're there, which is a common practice that I've had in previous places. That way, they're not absences, they don't hit us, the kids still get educated, and we know that's happening. But so that's something you might see in the, and Dr. Munoz's report later, in terms of some of the absentee rates coming down a little bit too. So, but that is a process that we're looking at for that.
I think that's really important, especially as we get more, more and more international students and just people who are just worldly, right? That are, especially if you have a point in time where it's a lot cheaper to go visit family, you're going to go. And it, sometimes it happens to be in the smack in the middle of the school year, so that's, that's, or a hall, or a very religious holiday or something like that, that's, you know, but that's really important to have those. So I'm glad that the district is making steps towards that.
So all these things are obviously really good student-centered practices, but I'm assuming, wondering, this is also going to help with like chronic absenteeism that Desi is looking at? Is that part of why we're doing some of this?
For, for the last piece that was mentioned in particular?
Yeah, and even like the medical reentry, the discipline, like the more data we have on why a kid is out, is that stuff that gets reported to Desi, or does it help us in some way on that accountability score?
Absences are absences. Desi doesn't care why. But I would argue that the more communication and transparent communication that you have with students and families can improve that. And certainly, if you're able to provide support for a medical need or a mental health need, it is less likely that there might be an extended absence again in the future. So yes, indirectly, but no, Desi doesn't care if it's excused, unexcused, or any of that.
In the, in the homeschool situation, they're actually almost unenrolled for a short period of time. So then they come back, so they don't count.
You're fudging data there.
No, they're getting educated in a different system in a different way. So.
And that, what you're talking about there, Superintendent Luft, that's all procedure and protocol, that's not policy?
Correct.
Right, so you're just informing us that you're working on it?
Yep.
Okay.
Parents have a right to homeschool their students, right, to do that. And we obviously have an obligation to report them as absent if they are enrolled in our schools and not coming, so.
So the handbook change specifically, that we have on that, just informs people that they need to contact their assistant principal and go over the options that they have. One of the options we will discuss is that one.
Okay. And with the medical reentry, you know, when kids come back from even a few days, sometimes kids are very overwhelmed when they're thrust back into a classroom and they feel like they've missed so much work and they're sitting there and they're not able to process what's going on because they're worried about what they missed, right? So this reentry meeting helps to mitigate that. And it's, we've found that it sets students up better with a smoother reentry and then less absences after.
Great. Any other questions?
We'll make a motion? To approve the high school handbook for 25, 26.
Do I have a second? By Judith, any other discussion? So I will start polling. Joan? Yes. Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, so we will move right along to our final appearance. We have Mr. Jeff Kerr here to join Dr. Munoz to give us, to speak to us about the music curriculum and adoption there.
Thank you for having me. And I feel like I'm at the NFL Draft, but the director of fine arts is now on the clock. Hit my 10-minute timer and try and stick to it.
We're going to do tonight, so.
No pressure. I didn't give him any pressure at all.
But I added this slide first because it just got announced on Tuesday that Norwood is recognized for the third year in a row as one of the best communities for music education in the country by the NAMM Foundation. What does that mean? I don't think we really talked about what that is. The NAMM Foundation is a nonprofit organization that has been recognizing and celebrating communities with strong music education programs for 26 years. The BCME Award is a flagship program that identifies districts and schools with high commitment to music education. And how does it work? The NAMM Foundation conducts a survey, which I filled out back in February, of school districts to gather data on music education programs, resources, and opportunities for students. This data helps them identify and recognize the best communities. And they have a specific focus on access and equity. So the BCME program also emphasizes ensuring that all students have access to music education as part of a well-rounded education. So it really does come across as a community award. It's not just about the students or the teachers. It really is the PMA who volunteers so much of their time, with the parents who volunteer so much of their time, with community resources, with curriculum. So, I mean, it's a perfect segue into what you're about to see and how important it is to move forward, so. So go Norwood, yes. All right, so I'm just going to fly through some of these, and I will say next, or here we go. But the overall process that we looked at, we started. But the overall process that we looked at, we started last spring in discussing this and looking into this, knowing art went the year before us. I worked with Lori Mee McGory to have a better understanding of how the process worked. So, next slide. So the process, we wound up looking at our current curriculum and wanting to keep it aligned with the Massachusetts arts curriculum framework and a commitment to best practices. And as a part of this effort, we aim to implement a spiral curriculum that develops students' musical understanding and skills progressively cross-grade levels. A key part of the process was the implementation of curriculum pilots at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, engaging all areas of instruction. And these were piloted at the general music level, at the elementary level, the instrumental in both elementary and high school, and then choral in middle and high school as well. Next, input and feedback. Again, we did this through district department meetings, building grade-level department meetings, one-on-one discussion surveys, and inventory of current materials at each school, which I'll speak about in a minute, and then piloting the materials. We had four areas of main focus. One of them was the foundational curriculum for elementary music and really making sure that what we have at the elementary school level sets us up for success and creates a lifelong learning right then and there. So that was one of them. The next was the modernization of middle and high school resources, knowing that these students are getting into a little bit more nuanced music and a lot of it comes from performance-based classes at the middle school and the high school. What can we do and what can we use to support them? The next was equity across all elementary schools. One of the things that I noticed in my first two years here is there were certain, there were certain curriculum and even certain materials at the Prescott that the vaults might not have had. Or so we did an analysis of what each school had. And in the budget, you'll see that I'm looking for parity across all six of the elementary schools especially. And then that's six. So the support materials to address short and long-term needs for instruments, classroom tools, and maintenance to support high-quality instruction and performance. So the three main curriculum that we looked at this year were Music First, Sabbath, which is actually the old Pearson, if that rings a bell to any educational people, and then Quaver. So those were the three main. And then I put together some slides that basically compare all three of them and some of the strengths of each. So the overview and philosophy of the three of them, and again, feel free to kind of go back and forth. I will tip my hat and say, look at Quaver, because that's the one that I'm suggesting we go with. So as we go through these slides, that's the one, if you wanted to kind of pay attention to that one and what that offers. So the overview and philosophy. The next one is curriculum content and how it's provided, then technology integration, then teacher support and flexibility, and then the best application of curriculum, how is it best applied? And ta-da, buried the lead, Quaver Music is the one that I'm suggesting and we are suggesting as a team to go with. On the next slide, I wound up putting up, if you wanted to go and dabble and just really take a look at it, there's the login information on the right-hand side for you to go in and work through. Looking on the next page, just a perfect example of how it's built in. The standards, they have it all by lesson, so it's all aligned. So the standards for every single lesson, they have the grade level, and then they have how it's aligned with the standards of create, perform, and all the state standards. The next one is scope and sequence. And again, this is something that I think we've been needing, especially at the elementary school level. Oftentimes, I think artists and music teachers in general cultivate a curriculum of their own over years and years and years. And they're very, they want to get to the same place, but we don't have the ability and the roadmap to get there. So the scope and sequence and the materials that Quaver provides, I think will put us on that track. Next, please. Teacher dashboard, again, this is just a quick visual of what they see and how many options they have. Next, please. Curriculum features, so they can go in, all the scope and sequences there, curriculum maps, the standards, multiple ways for them to tie that in. Orphan CODI are two of the methodologies that we use in the elementary schools. And they have, bless you, they have specific documentation and supplements for that. Next, please. And then best practices, how do you use? It's a primarily online curriculum, so a lot of teachers may not be used to that. How do you do that? There is heavy support for English language learners, also for exceptional learners. So if you have a student that is learning and is beyond what the class is doing, how do you support them? Multiple learning styles, again, it has a pretty thorough way of supporting all of our learners. Next, please. And this is just one of, I think, nine pages of songs lists. And what was nice about Quaver is I know that the staff years ago was working on curriculum. And one of the things that they were really concerned about was the music that they chose and used. A lot, most of the songs that they had are in this curriculum. So it aligned with what they already had, whereas one of the other ones had less and more newly created music to fit a style or a genre, where this is actually using music that is tried and true. Next, please. This is just a third grade curriculum map, again, outlining for the teachers where we should be, at what point in the year. Next, please. This is a lessons page for them to go in and choose the lessons. It gives them the weeks that they're teaching it, it gives them the topic. Next, please. Accessibility compliance, one of the things that I liked about Quaver too is because it's an online curriculum, what it allows for is flexibility in how it's presented. They have limitations on frame rate and the amount of movement on the screen. So if you're students that have some concerns visually that struggle with focus, you can have a setting that will take that away and it'll simply present the information in a different way. So that's for the elementary side of things. Next, please. Five through twelve is Music First, which is what we're looking to do. And I'm just going to hop through this real fast. And basically, this is going to encompass all the fifth grade through the twelfth, and it is much more involved with the music growth in listening and playing ability or singing ability. And it also carries through with some of the other courses, and I'll talk about that. So we can just fly through Focus on Sound, next one?
Take your time, Jeff, it's okay.
Okay.
I mean, I like how fast he's.
Well, I've got a minute, one minute. So Focus on Sound. So there is an unbelievable, next please. There's a massive wealth of information that this has, it's tied into an LMS-type system where teachers can assign work for students. They can do it at home, it gives them, some of them gives it immediate feedback, some of it the teachers put in. But they also have a huge content library with information where students can have music to play, but also has videos on technique. So how do I play pizzicato? And I've literally got a series of information that shows me with a professional musician playing this and giving quality feedback. Obviously, it's not a replacement to the teacher, but it's an excellent source, resource to have. One of the things, next please. Next one after that. One of the things that we've actually had in place for two years is this program called Sight Reading Factory. And one of the challenges, I think, that we face is music literacy, especially coming out of COVID. So musicians are often very good with our ears and we can hear things, especially singers. We can hear something, we can sing it back. Even instrumentalists can hear something and then make it happen on their instrument. This gives them the literacy aspect. So this is providing them with not just using their ears. They are, they progress through how to accurately read the music rhythmically, notation-wise. And we had this in place last year and this year. And our students auditioning for districts, junior and senior, were ranked some of the highest in their room. And that is something directly related to this program. And that's something that Mrs. Hartnett had pointed out. So their sight reading scores went way up. And as a singer trying out or a musician trying out, a lot of students can play the piece. Anybody can play the piece, you practice the piece. But it's the literacy of being able to then sit down and look at a piece of music and accurately represent what you see on the page. And a lot of students struggle to do that. So we saw a huge jump, so that was helpful. Next, please. One of the things that I appreciate for both of these, for Quaver and for Music First, is the high commitment to professional development. Both of them are committed to coming in and doing a full-day PD with our teachers. Additionally, on top of that, next please. On top of that, they have multiple times throughout the year that they will do support during, via webinar. They also have online training for it. So there's a deep dive into how the teachers can use it. Additionally, if the teacher is struggling with something, there's actually, basically, it's an online help. So if you're struggling with something, you hop online during any school day, you type in, and you've got a real person on the other end that can help you out. So it's extremely supportive in that respect. And then same thing, moving to the next. Next, please. So within this, again, this is five through eight, we're looking at a lot of our other classes outside of just ensembles. And there are a bunch of resources that can be found in there. So if you go to the next one, please. It gives you some of the chorus classes, the orchestra courses, the band courses. These are all things that our students and teachers will have access to. Continue, please, to the next one. And this one I actually like quite a lot. Mr. Conan at the high school just last, this year, for the first year, created a modern band class and a learn-to-jam class. This has a curriculum for that course, which is something that's really starting to take off. Modern band is meeting the kids where they're at. You play drums, you play bass, you play guitar. Okay, let's talk about it. And they bring them together. And then the learn-to-jam is for a lot of our students who may not have the capacity to learn an instrument, but they just want to play. So there's support materials for those as well. Continuing on, again, one more. So here, Music First Classroom provides an easy-to-navigate dashboard. So for the teacher, it's pretty straightforward. The students are also, on their end, able to access all of the things. And I'll talk about the three main programs that they'll have access to, next, please. And one more. And again, for special populations, provides easy-to-navigate, ah, where am I, one more. Examples of support for special populations, including EL, special ed, gifted students, differentiated materials. So they have a wide variety of, they have flexibility in how we can present this to each one of our students depending upon who they are, which is really, really quite nice. And then, excellent. So Sight Reading Factory, this is the program that we've been using that showed great improvement. So I just wanted, my basic spiel is done, but I wanted to show you a couple of the visuals so you understand. Next, please. So this is just a straight-up four-bar, eight-bar choral sight reading. They get this, they play the starting note and then they're off. And it records them, it gives them feedback immediately. Did you sing the right note? Or play, it's done, it's thrown onto you, did you sing the right note? Did you play the right note? No. What note did you sing if you didn't sing the right note? It'll tell you, it'll tell you if you were early, if you were late. It's a remarkable tool. Next one, please. If I just want to focus on rhythms, say I'm a percussionist or something, it's also there for those. Next one, please. Then we can also take it into ensembles, and we've done this this year as well. So this is a four-part choral piece, so soprano, alto, tenor, bass. That's your warm-up as you come in, go. Thirty seconds, read it. Next one, yep, go ahead. The next one's a full-on band piece. So again, doesn't matter what the ensemble is, it's there, it's a generator. They are not amazing pieces of music, but they are accurate in describing, I mean, it's not Mozart, it's not Beethoven, it's not, it is an eight-bar phrase that works well musically together. And they, the students hear it and they are playing to try and accomplish what they see in front of them. And then the last one's just a string quartet. So, and then Aurelia, the last two are Aurelia and Musition. They are, Aurelia deals with the listening side of things, Musition deals with the knowledge side of things. And what's nice is they work kind of in tandem with each other. Next one, please. So I can have something like this, it's just a straight-up lesson on scale degrees. So what are the scale degrees of, oh, this one's Aurelia. So scale degrees, I'm going to play something and you have to tell me what scale degree it is, based on your knowledge of the major scale. I stop here, what note did I stop on, what is that? And then, next, please. It gets even involved a little bit further into chord progressions. And what I, again, like is there's the feedback side of things. So here, it's an outline of an eight-bar phrase, of which they are playing chords. There are only two to choose from, you have to write it down. Great, I made this one wrong on purpose. Next slide, please. Do I wish to try again? Sure, I could try again. So it's giving you, prompting you, not saying, yes, you got it, no, you didn't. It's saying, it's nudging you. And then the next one, I got it wrong again, I'll do better next time. However, what it does is it tells you exactly what you didn't get. So you can make note of it and you don't just say, oh, I got it wrong and move on. So it's giving you, after several tries, the information that you can interpret and then, and learn from. And then the next one, so this is all, that's all oral, that's all listening. Musition is the visual side of things, which pairs. So next slide, I think I've only got three or four more to go, so hang in there. So A-flat major scale, ascending. Mark it off. What's an A-flat major scale? And it gives you three options. On the bottom left, I can do it as a piano, I can do it as a guitar, if I'm a guitarist, or I can use it as a MIDI roll. An awful lot of our students use DAS digital audio workstations that have all those little dashes and dots that they just create. It gives you three options as to how you want to input it depending upon where you are. Next, please. And this is just a version of the guitar, same thing, write a diminished chord. And then the last one is, this is where we're using our understanding of the theory and the music versus listening. So it's asking, okay, A sharp down to C, what is that? Next, please. I got this one right, congratulations to me. It's an augmented sixth. And again, it just, it gives you feedback, awesome. And it gives, it gives the students a chance to grow in both their musicianship and their knowledge of information. And it also gives the students a chance to grow in their listening capabilities and their skills and performing skills. Now the support slide, which is the budget side of things. Outside of the curriculum examples that I've given you, there are several main support things that I'm looking for. There are, they're listed on the left-hand side, Wenger acoustic shells. We have the acoustic shells in the auditorium. They are, they were literally purchased from another school and brought to Norwood years ago. They are no longer safe. They do not stay up, they fall down, they are heavy. Paul Campbell comes over every time we have a concert, God love him, and he will literally raise it up and he will lower it. And they just, they are, they are not safe. And it's an expense that we just can't do it through the budget. So this is the perfect time to ask for that. The drum side of things, we're looking into, we expanded a little bit into world drumming this year. This would, again, this is the equity side of things. We have two schools that have it. I'm looking to get it in all six of the elementary schools. That means putting it for the other four. Violin and violorack, bass rack, cello rack. Both CMS and elementary schools just need space. They have very little areas where they can safely store some of their instruments. We're making a wonderful investment in all of these instruments over the past couple of years and taking the pressure off of our families to have to buy their own instruments or rent their own instruments. We want to make sure that we can have that long-term. So these cello racks, these stands will protect them in such a way where they're not just thrown in a corner. They literally are holding them at the different schools. The gong stand at CMS, again, CMS is really excited to move forward in so many ways. And I know that CMS has become the collection spot for many of the high school. It's like the younger sibling. So they keep getting the thing that went down from the high school that was used, and they got a new one, so it went down. The gong stand that's down there right now is not holding it very well at all and falling apart and is literally put back together multiple times a year. And the same thing with the marimba. So those are two instruments that need replacement. Ukulele is another thing that we do have in one of our schools, elementary schools, but we don't have it in our other schools. That is part of the Quaver curriculum. So I'm looking to outfit each one of our schools, elementary schools with that. Same thing with boomwhackers, they are the long plastic tubes that make, that are pitched, that are used in general elementary school classrooms. And then a couple of portable keyboards because Amy Bedard, who's our string teacher, has to teach strings. And usually, it's in a space that's the gym or somewhere, and she needs a keyboard to accompany her students. And we have them in every school with the exception of two. So that's the equipment side of things. The last page is the final cost breakdown, the K-4. And I put five there because there is a crossover next year with our fifth-grade curriculum. Quaver also covers that. So we'll be able to use that as well within the Quaver side of things. And we have the crossover five to twelve in the Music First. So that's the other curriculum. And then the support expenses, there is the link to the individual line items there with links to each. links to each website, so you can go look at exactly what I'm talking about with prices and the total is there. And we, again, appreciate your consideration and thank you for supporting the program, and I will happily entertain any questions you might have. And I am sorry, that was totally double my time.
Told you, you're lucky.
But it's worth it.
You're in a good mood.
It's worth it.
No, this is actually really exciting because obviously we are known for as long as I've been here for our music curriculum. So I think this is something long overdue, so I think it's worth the extra time, in my opinion. Hopefully my colleagues will be able to say that. Any questions for Mr. Kerr on the curriculum or the presentation?
It's very thorough, Mr. Kerr, thank you. So we are purchasing it out of this year's budget, correct?
We purchase, we start the, once you guys approve it,
Yep.
you start putting purchase orders together, and we have it purchased before June 30.
Okay.
And I have all the quotes and those are sitting in a folder in my bag.
Yep. And I think we approved like up to $150,000, right? So this is a little under, even with the support expenses that you need. So it's within what we approved. And then if, we will hopefully get the curriculum in over the summer. And then I apologize, I missed the last meeting, it was probably in your PD calendar, but is there PD time set aside for our?
Music already has department time within the year, certain spaces, and that's what Mr. Kerr will be focusing on when they have that PD time.
Okay.
Like we have now, where like the elementary specialists have different contents.
Yep.
Library go here, you go here. And then for the middle school, there's always departmental time every month for all the different departments.
And the, one of the first PD days out of the gates is department time.
Yep.
Anyhow, and that's the day.
Second half of the third day.
We'd bring in the people both from Quaver and from Music First, and they're more or less separate anyhow, so we've got elementary in one spot and then middle and high in the other. The only crossover would be that fifth grade level, but we have, again, we have follow-ups that we can do with them as well.
So next year's kind of a transition year into the curriculum, right? Like if they're getting the training right at the start of the year.
Correct.
Well, we hope to fully do it, but there'll be some natural transition.
Yeah. And if, what I'll try and do is figure out if they can give us access to, if the teachers wanted to look at it at the end of the year, even more in-depth, and see if they can open it up a little bit earlier as soon as they get the PO, and see if we can do that. And both companies have been very flexible with allowing us to use it freely.
Oh, great.
Definitely, they want you to, they want to, they want to hook you. I can see why, though, it's very thorough, it's very, it's a lot of really great tools.
So do the kids have access to this outside of this one?
They will. So the, the, the Music First, there's a, an LMS component to it or an assignment component to it, so they'll have access to it when they want. So they can have an assignment, or they can go in and they can just pick up aurelia and I want to listen to, you know, do chord progressions. So they'll have that access. And the younger students will have the ability to have something assigned to them, or they'll be able to use it in class as well. So there's an interactive component in class, but less engagement outside of school for them.
It's really cool technology compared to when I played the cello.
I was going to say, like, I'm a singer, I can sight read, but I can't tell you what note it is. I can't tell you what, I can tell you what the key is, that's about it. But this would have been really, really useful.
And the fact that they can just do it on a computer, I had to like write with pencil and erase.
Which is still important, which is still important, but not used as, when we get to AP Music Theory, that's one of the things that we just, put it on paper, put it on paper.
Or up to the chalkboard with the, the.
With the five-line stuff.
The five-line, like with the chalk, like that was, yeah.
We never see one of those again, that's okay. It's really okay.
Emery, we're learning a lot about your education tonight.
I know the chalk.
I had a really great time, I'll tell you that. I did a lot.
I have a really quick question for you, Jeff.
Yes.
The middle school items for the support materials, I'm just wondering if those were ever put in as requests as part of the building project?
They came after, within the past year, all our FFN E had to be in two years ago. And I was able to put something in last year, I put in a piano that they're going to bring in, which is great. But those did not make that round of FFN E because the request didn't come from the teachers until this year when we're really looking at what we needed.
Thank you.
Wonder if there is any opportunity with the.
I might bring it up.
Yeah. I think that is a wonderful idea. All right, any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the music curriculum?
Motion to approve the music curriculum.
Do I have a second?
Second, but we should, we should probably amend, including the support expenses, or Mr. Luff, or you want to ask to hold off on that?
Well, I think, have you already, have you already voted that as part of the budget?
What was that?
That's already been voted as part of the budget?
Yep.
So we've approved up to $150,000 for the curriculum refresh.
Right, so that's within, it's already within.
It was voted last year for this year.
Yes, if it's already within the budget, then you've already approved that through the budget process, so.
I say, I agree, we can approve it and then we can, it can always be amended later with, with those.
I just want to make sure whatever motion is needed for Jeff and JJ and Sean to start the purchasing process, we give that to you tonight. So I'm assuming you want to start ordering everything.
In my bag.
And although we might try to get some of it through MSNBC, we still want to start the process, correct, for the expenses?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you vote to adopt the curriculum and the budget's already been approved through you, you've already voted for that part of it. And so it's just, once you adopt it, then they can start.
Okay.
Five minutes.
So, yeah, so I think just to clarify, so the motion is to approve the music curriculum and supporting expenses up to $139,692. Is that?
Sure.
Do you accept that friendly? Do I have a second?
Second.
I do see Joan has a question, but I just realized I didn't hear her bloop go up, so I think there's actually a speaker problem, because every time she speaks, I don't hear her and I didn't hear the bloop with the handheld. So I'm wondering if there might be an issue with the speaker.
Let me test the sound on here.
Do the volume?
It's usually because the owls will not appropriately set up as the speaker or something like that.
Click on auto, say it's where you were clicking at. And then go to speakers. Try to pick speaker.
Yep, so it looks like.
Meaning now, there you go.
Why don't we get you to go to the owl?
There we go.
Joan, can you hear us now?
I can hear you.
All right.
Ah, now we can hear you. The whole time I thought it was Joan's problem that I couldn't, she kept making thumbs up, and it was not, it was us. Joan, you had a question?
I don't have a question. I would like to debate the motion once it is seconded and approved for purposes, so I will second for the purposes of discussion.
Okay, fabulous. So discussion, what, yes, please, please continue.
I would like for us to consider regaining the support expenses. We are in a difficult budget moment. And I have said I'm going to only go for your instruction. And it is unfortunately, it is not mission critical to support those support expenses in this current budget movement. So I just want to put out there that if it's possible, I would like for us to consider supporting only the curriculum and not the support expenses.
So just as a side note, so this will be coming out of the FY25 budget. So this is something that we had already, so this is what we're coming up to the end of, that we don't.
I understand.
Okay.
I hold my position. I understand, I think we all know the budgeting process squad, given when we have to make decisions about things and how things are impacted. So given that we didn't get the form out, we asked for a town meeting to put the stabilization fund, I'd suggest we take that $57,000, move it to the state and vote to move it to a stabilization fund for special ed for next year. Make that recommendation.
Could I ask Mr. Kerr a question? I, my understanding from what you presented is that these support materials are embedded in the curriculum that you want to purchase.
That's what I was going to say. These are not, these are not add-ons, these are things to support all of the programs that are in the curriculum that we have right now, or that we are going to about, we are going to purchase.
And some of them you are, oh, sorry.
If they're additionally, if they're, they are additional items, you can teach the music curriculum without those expenses and move the, pass the expenses on to the parents. I don't love this idea, but we're heading into crisis, I do not like it, but we're going to be having these same conversations about sports, what is, what is mission critical for a school system versus what is not mission critical? So the fact that it's budgeted out means that we could, I assume, approve a K through four curriculum, a five through 12 curriculum, and support expenses, one, two, or all three. And I'm making the recommendation that we have the support expenses. I fully expect my motion to fail, but I do want to raise the specter of what we're dealing with and think about how are we proactively looking at our next year budget?
I just want to say I admire and respect your consistency and commitment to your principles, Joan. I would just like to, I know we have a motion on the table, can I like move to, I know Joan wanted to say her piece, but can we move to that vote for the motion on the table?
Are we still, yeah, well, if there's, well, if there's no more discussion on that motion, is there further discussion on that motion?
Well, this is actually just why I asked to be clear on what we're voting on.
Yep.
I am in support, but I understand Joan's questioning, and I did want to make very clear what we're voting on. Is it all of this? Because even though we previously said it could be up to 150, now is the time to raise the discussion that Joan is raising. I support it all, but I understand why she's talking about it.
And I also, I hear, Joan, I hear you and I understand, and to that, to the point about, you know, the stabilization fund, I, you know, I just don't feel that $58,000 is really going to, it's kind of so much less than what we were looking for to max it out. It really isn't going to make that much of a difference, it's going to make much more great impact if we, you know, approve it as part of this curriculum. I do understand what you're saying, because trust me, budget world has been, I've been living, eating, sleeping it, breathing it for a couple of years now. And it's not, and it's a specter I don't like as well, but in this case, I don't think it's going to, it's kind of, you know, it's not, it's, yeah, it's not going to make or break next year's budget. And I certainly don't want to try to roll over just that amount of money, but I do appreciate your.
Yeah, like, like I said, I am raising specter, I fully expect this to fail, I'm not going to die on this hill, but I will continue, I've kind of laid out how I'm going to navigate my way through it, and we'll just continue to do that, so.
Yep, absolutely. Any other discussion on the motion? So the motion on the table is to approve the entire amount of the $139,692 made by Judith and seconded by Joan for discussion. Any other discussion? So I will poll Joan. No. Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr, very much for your thorough.
And Joan, I understand.
But I saved you $11,000. I think I won 50, well, $139.
Yeah, it's not personal, I, I truly value this as a parent. Again, I'm just, I'm looking for a line of logic that makes sense for me as we work through the budget for the next years.
And I understand that, so, thank you all, I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff, very much.
I have to go put in some POs.
But Mr. Luff, I would, I know you said you were probably going to look into it, and I know I missed Monday's middle school building committee, but FFN E was briefly talked about on Monday?
Yeah, and we'll bring that up later, we did, there were a couple additions, you'll hear about the, we're trying to add the piano, that Jeff was talking about, there's a few things in there that haven't been totally approved yet, but that are coming.
Yeah, so perhaps we could price out from the list that Jeff gave us, some say like CMS and elementary, maybe we can price out just the CMS costs.
I will absolutely do that and see if we can get, we can get them in. Yep.
Okay, great.
Yep, that'll be a goal.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us into our next agenda items, a superintendent report. I'll hand it over to Mr. Luff.
Thank you. So we've already done the Norwood High School principal search announcement, so again, excited for Cindy and excited for Norwood. The next two are two job descriptions I have for your approval tonight. One is the nurse leader job description. As you know, October Spurburst currently our interim nurse leader, and we are looking to post this position for a permanent position. So we wanted to make sure that the nurse leader position was approved by you for any changes. The previous job description had older units like Unit C in there and different avenues, so we modified this in collaboration with our attorney, just to make sure it was good, and with our partners in Unit A and the Teachers Association. So I'm asking for your approval on the nurse leader job description this evening, and then I'll go on to the other one.
So you have that in your packets, is there any, and we did, no, we didn't do this, no, sorry. We discussed it.
Yes.
We did not approve it there, but any questions on the job description that is in your packets this evening?
That's a huge job description.
It's a huge job.
Thank you for updating it, it's been a while, since it's been reviewed.
Can I make a motion to approve the nurse leader job description as recommended by the superintendent?
Yes, you definitely can. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Teresa. Any other discussion on this job description? All right, poll, Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes five to zero.
The next job description is the summer program coordinator job description. Now, this particular job description is, is a program coordinator for our summer programs, for extended school year special ed programs, for our summer academic programs, as well as our middle school transition program, which is the Coakley Connects. It's labeled middle school transition because you never know if the name will stick over time, and we wanted to make sure the job description would last longer than, you know, however that name lasts. So in the past, this position was just kind of an hourly rate that we use out of the contract. This really lays out the one job description for all three program coordinators, whether it be hiring and the work they do in the spring, to the work they do in the summer, to the debrief that they do after, to make sure the program's ready to go in the following year. So that is a job description for summer program coordinator that I will be asking for your approval tonight. Again, a review with our attorney and our friends at Unit A.
Fabulous. So again, you have that in your packets. Any questions on the summer program coordinator job description?
I'd make a motion to approve the summer program coordinator job description that's recommended by the superintendent.
A second. A second, Judith. Any other discussion? Okay, poll, so Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes five to zero.
Great, thank you. And just one more quick update, oh, actually two more quick updates. Happy to have had town meeting, unless, I don't want to steal any budgets, I'm committed folks' updates.
No, go for it.
Happy to have had town meeting on Monday evening where multiple articles related to the schools were passed. One, a very exciting one, I think, is the mass health reimbursement warrant article that will allow us about $300,000 to support a new speech and language pathologist that will be added to the middle school, as well as two current related service providers that we have in the district to kind of bring revenue in for us so we can continue that cycle of, you know, of revenue for medically related services in schools. The other warrant article that was really close, in like the closest town meeting vote ever, 100, 100.[1684.16]
To 94?
100 to 94 with six abstentions.
Are you kidding?
Was the decision between $300,000 for our stabilization fund or $886,000 for our stabilization fund. We lost by four abstentions and we got to $300,000, but that will leave about a million in our stabilization fund, which is great, which is well more than we have now. And so we're really excited that that happened. Our technology warrant articles were passed. And I believe there was one more.
Medicaid?
Medicaid.
Ah, the MOA.
The MOA.
The MOA regarding the transportation, the.
The foster care.
Foster care. So we can receive reimbursement for the foster care reimbursement. So all good. We, I think, finished around 10, 10:15 maybe, 10, 9:30? I don't, something like that.
It was already this past.
Yeah, we decided, we decided not to go to the budget, but we will be presenting the budget tomorrow night. We should be on pretty early, and so hopefully we'll go through that and we'll have a good outcome as well, so excited for that.
Yeah, we got through the first, like, housekeeping warrant motions in the annual town meeting, and then, thank God, Teresa. We're not going to start budgeting like, oh, good. I don't have enough caffeine in me for this.
But we're up front and center, which is good, so we're answering questions that way. So we have a place at the table, and I'll do a short presentation tomorrow that I share with all of you, just to tell our story a bit and try to sell the budget.
So if anybody is available to sit at the table.
Come sit next to us.
Me, Tim, and Sean will be there.
I will join you tomorrow.
With bells on.
The other thing outside of the budget is I would love you to take a look at the Norwood School Committee Board behind you. And there are two new pieces up there, one with Kate Sibbing Dunn's final date and one adding Judith's date at the start. So, you know, that's been a question for a very long time to get those dated.
Yay, Kate. I'll take a picture and send it to Kate.
Well, you don't think she's watching?
Maybe.
I wasn't going to call her out in that manner, but.
And that's it for me, madam chief.
Fabulous, thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Luff on his update? Great, so we'll roll right along into our next item under budget. We just have the one budget subcommittee update.
Yeah, it'll be very short. We have not met as a subcommittee since our last meeting. But we are meeting on Tuesday, 1:30 to 3:00. And then we have two meetings in June scheduled as well, June 3rd from 10 to 12 and June 12th from 1 to 3:00. Our goals for those next couple of meetings is working on the budget subcommittee handbook, the share cost allocation agreement with the town. And then also, Tim and Sean are starting to work on some five-year projections that they'll be sharing with Anne Marie and I. And then I think at the end of June, we are bringing them back to the full school committee. I was probably overly ambitious in telling you I would have a really good draft of the budget subcommittee handbook next week. I will have a draft. It's not going to be as comprehensive as I promised. So I do not know, Anne Marie, if it'll be ready to come back to the full committee on May 28th. We have to move that to June. But we will have something to begin working on.
Yep.
And I think those are our big next steps, that's the budget subcommittee.
I think one thing, I'm not sure if Mr. Manion has told, has let everyone know yet, there's a lovely FY '26 budget book. If you haven't received one, they look like this, they're gorgeous. And we used them the other night and they're awesome. We weren't able to get them out in time for town meeting, but they are available and people need them. And we didn't want to add anything new to the mix, but they are a great resource for everybody.
They are also available on the district website. Say it again for the people in the back. They are also available on our district website, under School Committee and Budget. And they're right there for the 2026 budget, first link. So peruse at your leisure. Lots of really good information in there, the memos in the first few pages before you get into the nitty-gritty of all the tables, so. Like I said, I've been, I've already, I've already directed several people who had questions after town meeting to. So it was a very good resource to direct them to, and it was actually well-received in a couple of cases, so.
A great thanks to Mr. Manion and Gina Manion, who worked on this so hard to get this in place. So thank you both for that. It's great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, this one should be fine.
So is that, is that it for? That is it until after our next meeting. Love it. That's pretty much where I left it on there, just so we could announce what the next meeting was. Okay, so we're going to move right into old business. So the first item under old business is actually not going to be a vote tonight because I did not get out our doodle polls in time. However, we don't need to discuss scheduling things during meetings since that is something we can do outside of meetings. But this is just a general reminder and kind of putting it out there that to look out for a doodle poll, I will be, I will put one together. I'm going to work with Mr. Luff first, just to make sure that any of the dates that I put on there would be dates he's available in the first place. So I will remove those right off the top because there is no point in having a meeting if he can't be there. And then please feel free to put in, and I, just for, you know, reminder, I usually put in the three options, like, yes, no, you know, I could be remote. And just as also as reminder, obviously, we are, we are remote for these meetings during the summertime just because schedules get really crazy and we want to be able to get, give everybody the chance to get together. So we will do that, and we will probably try to work that out before the next school committee meeting so that we have dates to.
So I have two things for that.
Sure.
Mr. Luff, could you bring your recommendations from your team and from your first year sitting here and what you sort of think? And then second, if you want to extend that, I know we normally do the regular schedule, but if we're going to start talking about the schedule, I think we should just do it all at one time. And then second, I think, Anne Marie, to your point, you know, I think we should think as we choose to have some of those meetings, like you had said, that if people are unable to be there or we don't have an agenda, maybe that is full. You know, just thinking about that idea of quality over quantity, not having one for the sake of having one, but making sure that we have one for, you know.
I think we can be really judicious with that, that if we see, if we have things that are not time, you know, sensitive, if there are things on them that need check-ins and it's a 15-minute meeting, it's a 15-minute meeting. But if there are things that really can be consolidated to one meeting that don't need to be voted on, absolutely, we'll be judicious with that. And I think that's going to, you know, be driven from Mr. Luff's side and what he needs us to get together for, to vote on and not vote on and stuff like that. So I think that'll be a really collaborative process.
Anne Marie, I saw on the long-term agenda, somebody put some dates. Who was that? That was, I thought so.
I was trying to plan out kind of how all the evaluation pieces of the cycle would work and all that, so.
So you've already started to think through some of what David is bringing up. Just one request reminder, three of you, not Judith because you weren't in the seat yet, but three of you did promise me that we would have a workshop over the summer when we didn't commit to it as goals for this current year. And I do really think for a variety of reasons, we need a thorough school committee workshop.
I think we can work that in there, especially if it's in lieu of a very short and unnecessary meeting. But I think, I think it's, I think for a variety of reasons, it's true, like, it's a good time because, yes, it's hard in the summertime because it's time off, but at the same time, we're so busy during the rest of the year with school being open and jobs and kids and everything else that it's been really difficult to get us, and we have so many meetings scheduled already with, you know, and just the extra meetings, right? So we have school committee meetings, we have all the subcommittee meetings and all the different, you know, some things that we're on, plus town meeting and everything else. So it has been difficult. So hopefully, I think we should look at that, dates for that, and try to commit to getting together one, at least one time for that during the summer and try to be, and again, I don't think there's going to be a need for like a meeting every week or anything like that because it is the summer, so it's a lot.
Yeah.
I don't mind sitting in the summer, once, twice, whatever that is to be done.
Yeah, whatever you need. And I think that's just exactly what we'll talk about, is whatever we need to, you know, to keep things moving and.
And just in past year, so many of us spend part of the summer out of state, but that's why thankfully we have that remote option.
Oh, thank God.
So it makes things much easier than when we used to have to all be in person.
Yeah, as long as it's not fireworks going off behind me and I'm cursing you all, then.
The only other thing, Anne Marie and Tim, we should probably try to touch base with Boris Leckman and Tony. I know everyone's focused on town meeting, but they have publicly said they wanted to start a separate task force around the budget.
Yeah, Maya mentioned it even again at town meeting.
Oh, she did, okay. Yeah, so we have said now for the past three summers, we were going to do summer work and we never have, so that would be helpful to have a sense if our counterparts really are committing to it with us or not.
Yeah.
We have to schedule a meeting with them to.
Oh, facilities, I know, yep.
Did somebody officially take a vote for that?
For what, I'm sorry?
That task force.
It's the Board of Selectmen.
Or FinCom.
No, it was Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen, okay. But Maya did mention it, again, that we need to, that she would recommend it, that the boards get together and do a bigger deep dive because just the outlook.
Oh, well, I think we need like a three-board full-day meeting again, that I've been saying for the past couple of years. But the Board of Selectmen, I believe, said they want it, what are they calling it? Like the Structural Deficit Task Force.
Oh, okay.
I've not heard that yet.
Yep.
So if they're intending on starting that and leading that and not going through BBC, we just need to know what we're committing to and who is doing what.
Yep. Fabulous. Okay, so again, look for, doodle poll for me, and we'll do a lot of that via email and electronic communications since we can do that scheduling that way. And I do like the idea, David, of just rolling it into the next year's scheduling. So we can look at those since Mr. Luff wants to get things scheduled out for the purposes of reviews and things. I love it. The forward-looking is going to be very useful for me trying to plan my life, so I really appreciate it. Okay, so we'll bring that right into the next agenda item. Is there anybody else, has anything else? Okay. So the next item is strategic plan update.
So let me just share my screen here. I'm going to let Dr. Muniz do most of this, but I do just want to share that obviously, we had a one-year strategic plan, kind of a bridge plan for this last year. And that, you know, and we have, back in, I think, December, was it December? I think it was December. I provided you with updates on kind of where we were so far. So this is kind of meant to be an end-of-the-year update on the plan. I just want to set the stage for next year when we do this. It's going to be a summary of the State of the Union data that we're, based on the template that we're creating for the administrators that they're going to be following through on next year as they collect their data. They're going to be implementing certain data sets into this kind of slide deck that we're going to be asking them to do, whether it be on reading data or academic data or behavioral data or accessibility data, or whatever it might be, that they're going to be showing that to us, actually, probably in an admin council meeting, you know, really kind of going through that as a team. And then we'll present a summary of that to you. So that will kind of be what next year looks like with a ton more data that you can use for my evaluation, that I can use for, you know, these folks' evaluation, that I can use for the principal evaluation, school improvement plan updates, all of those things. So it's all going to be aligned. So this is not what you should expect next year, but so this is just kind of a general update on where we landed this year.
First, I want to start off and thank all the school leaders and the directors of our district because I think that, this is my second year now, and we're coming up on the second full year, and the collaboration that happens between schools and our district directors, such as our ELE and student services, has definitely increased in a positive way. And with the support of Dr. Luff, we have been able to make some strides, which you'll see tonight in our plan, that we have some things to celebrate. And we obviously recognize there's still work to do. But I do want to recognize that our school leaders are putting our teachers in the best positions or better positions to actually be more effective with students. And so we are happy to see some of the results from that.
So as Dr. Luff talked about with the process, so anything you see in white is something that we talked about back in December. If you see it in yellow, it's an update. So it's new information that we have. They want to put you guys on an update board.
And I will note quickly, the school improvement plan updates, they are at the end of this slide deck for you to review, to take a look at based on the one-year or two-year plans. Depending on what they were, everyone was on a one- or two-year plan. The updates are here. In August, when they are presented to you, at the end of August, when they are presented, when the new school improvement plans are presented, the principals will bring you just kind of, a summary of these updates too as part of those presentations. And just so you know also, the school improvement plans themselves for next year will be provided to me. I think I have them provided to me by June 14th so that I can provide them to you so we can have them before July 1st for approval. But then they'll present them formally at the end of August as part of a presentation that will include the updates as well. So you have plenty of time to figure out if you have questions from those things because we'll have them embedded in the presentation, right?
Great. Yep, so here we go with priority one that we talked about, which is instructional focus. So we wanted to think about a professional learning system as well as inclusive practices for especially our highest needs students, students at IEPs and our multilingual learners. That's one of the things we wanted to look at. Next slide, please. And so our outcome is we wanted to have 50% of teachers demonstrate improvement in instructional practices. And we wanted, we were ambitious in saying monthly coaching and observation and giving them at least one high-quality professional development session. We, obviously, you can see the white stuff, go ahead and go to the next one. But the white stuff, we talked about in December, that we already have some professional development happening in the vision with our coaching. We are, we have now trained our, some teacher leaders and district and school administrators in our third and fourth days of cooperative learning, which will happen next year for the entire staff in preparation for their training to be coaches for cooperative learning structures next year so we can implement more coaching sessions for our teachers. And in addition to that, school leaders are also modeling cooperative learning structures or practices in their professional development sessions with their staff at different various times, and they're having their staff, so their teacher leaders also support that and lead some of those structures as well. We also wanted to see a 5% increase in student proficiency levels. We're thinking about interim assessments for STAR renaissance, and that's basically assessed in math and ELA. And so that's what we're looking at for desired outcome two. And we have done a couple of things to think about how we're supporting that process going forward. We have funds in our budget for FY '26 to have PLC leaders. We are, we have established with the PD calendar which days we're going to have PLCs, so teachers will be leading their PLCs there. And then in our cycle, obviously, we're making sure everything aligns. The end of the union cycle that Dr. Luff talked about, our school improvement plans, our instructional leaders are looking at that very closely. But when we look at the actual numbers and data, our Renaissance STAR assessments, we assess in the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. And so we wanted to go apples to apples. We wanted to go mid-year of last year to mid-year of this year because we already have taken that assessment. We haven't took the end of the year yet. And we are seeing a slight increase about a little over 2% in ELA proficiency, so the number of kids that are on benchmark or above in grades two through eight. And even some high school kids take their Renaissance assessment, so they're actually embedded into this data as well. And then in math, we have increased about 2% as well. Not, sorry, not 2%, 7% in math, so, or, sorry, I'm going to get the wrong data here. About 4%. And we want that 5% target, so we're not there, but we're actually making gains. And so we're celebrating and we're a little optimistic with the end-of-the-year testing as well. And hopefully that that'll translate to some of those as Renaissance is a predictor of what our end-of-the-year assessments for DESI will be. In DIBELS, DIBELS is kindergarten through third grade. Every student is tested through a DIBELS assessment, which is phonics, reading awareness, and all the reading foundational skills. We had 50% of kids proficient last year, mid-year, that were at grade level or above. And this year, obviously, it's one set of kids, different, we have new kindergartners coming in, but 57% of our kids are now at grade level or above mid-year. So it just shows that the structures that principals are putting in place, structures teachers are using, our reading specialists, our interventionists, the systems that we're trying to put in place now as a district are making slow progress here. Math is just for DIBELS, just in grade one. So we're looking to obviously extend that assessment window for other grades next year. But right now, it's just math that takes, grade one just takes math, and they have increased a couple percentage points as well. And we can probably attribute that to maybe some ST math that the kindergartners are doing and other in grade one, piloted ST math last year, and good one this year. So that may be a benefit of that, but we're still analyzing the data to make sure that that's correlation that we want to talk about. Here's just a visual graph of the DIBELS ELA, so you can see. One of the things that we really want to celebrate, so over 1,000 kids have taken the assessment, and these are obviously kindergarten through third grade. In both years, over 1,000 kids in each assessment. And the number of students that are far below in the red has decreased dramatically. And so it's something that we, that we aim to do with our intervention systems, our tier-two and tier-three systems, is have the number of kids that are far below benchmark move into the yellow, move into the green, move into the blue, so you can see how that's moving along there. Climate and culture is our priority too, so safe and supportive schools. And so we have some survey data to share with you, as well as disciplinary referrals. We wanted to show a decrease in 15% in disciplinary referrals, or incidents at least, and then a 20% increase in students reporting feeling safe and belonging because we feel like that those are good measurement tools that we can look at. And we have some data to share. those are good measurement tools that we can look at. And we have some data to share. In addition to that, for the safety, we have hired, we've obviously, you guys know about, we got a director of safety, compliance, and communications for next year. We also are adding two behavioral interventionists into the budget for our elementary buildings. We are getting ready to have a screener for a piloted throughout the school district. So some grade levels will do it, some, some schools will do it. But it's the savers and it's just a mental health screener where kids will report. And so we can see if there's any red flags that we need to follow up with using our school adjustment counselors or our school psychologists or any of those other things. It is a pilot this year. So the Renaissance is given to us for free. And we actually, if we plan it forward with this pilot, we will be looking at grant funds to purchase this pilot because there is grant funds out there purposely for this. That's what DESI had asked us to do this year. We have recommendations from the Unit A Safety Team that meets monthly. As you can see what those recommendations are right there. And we looked at the behavioral incidents, disciplinary incidents overall in our data system. So that disciplinary incidents that go into our Aspen, we pulled the totals for 2024. And as of right now to date for 2025, we are a 26% decrease in total number of incident referrals, which is a huge number actually. So first, I talked to Margot about this today and Dr. Frazek. And so I said, hey, she said, do you feel it? She said, I, she said, I feel it. She said, you know, we have, she said, I feel it because they, both the Coke Leana High School have less incident referrals this year than they did last year, even though we know that there's obviously some challenges that happen at the school level sometimes. So we wanted to celebrate that.
And if I could, if I could just add to that. So you might ask the question, so what behaviors, what discipline events? We're not going to be able to answer that. So one of the things that we've realized at the Unit A Safety Committee meeting is that people assign different things for the same thing and it's all over the place. So some of the work we did was, we said, okay, so what are we going to actually have for behavioral reporting in terms of terms that we are going to use that are consistent from pre-K all the way up? And then now how are we going to train staff to enter that data into Aspen? So when we collect that data, we're actually talking about the same thing. So we're not going to be able to get that for you. So this is just total incidents. This is probably the best that we can do in terms of that, but it is.
From skipping class to, you know, to fights to, you know.
So I was going to be a pain. So your, the norm or definition of incidents are referrals that are generated by teachers because then there's the state side of incidents that's...
Yes, teachers putting in referrals in Aspen and wanting administrators to follow.
Yep.
For any, any plethora of things, right? Kid didn't take off their hat. I don't know. I have no idea why they have.
Insubordinate.
Yeah, insubordinate, yes.
That decrease was K through 12?
That decrease was just middle school and high school because we don't have a way to track for the kindergarten through fourth grade. But that's what Dr. Luff was talking about right now.
It's also been a very big discussion in the...
Yeah, they don't all get entered into Aspen. Sometimes they do. Sometimes it's entered in a different way. So we're actually going to work with training all of the elementary staff too on how to enter that into Aspen, similar to how it's done at the middle and high school. So that's part of the process that we're going through.
And the 26% decrease is this year over last year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. 61, almost 62% of students had favorable responses in feeling safe at school. That's the mid-year survey that they took. They'll take that survey again at the end of the year. And we didn't ask safety questions to students last year. So we don't have nothing to compare it to, but that's something that we started this year and we want to do obviously year after year. Is, you know, we asked about three to four questions around safety, you know, whether it's, do you feel like, you know, you can get bullied online? If you, if you feel like you're being bullied, can you find an adult? How many fights do you see at your school? Like those are the kind of incidences that we get, questions that we ask students obviously rate. And then we mark favorable responses for that. So we, but we did see a decrease in students reporting a sense of belonging. So last year, mid-year surveys, 73, almost 74% of kids reported a sense of belonging. And then this year, 62%, almost 60% reported a sense of belonging. And that could be a plethora of reasons that we're looking into. One, it could be like, if the question, if they're thinking about the question about the classroom they're currently in, they have a new teacher. So that could be, that could be, you know, a reason why they're like, well, this teacher, this class environment feels different than the one maybe I felt last year. Or if they're thinking about it as a school lens. So we need to, as an administration team, think about how are we previewing kids these questions? So we're making sure they're all having the same understanding of each question. And we're really looking closely to see if these questions, as well as other questions they take in this survey, should be belonging questions. So.
Question. Are you able to break that down by school? Like, do you know if there's a certain school that kids are feeling less like they belong?
Yeah, yeah. We don't have it here in this data, but we can't forget it twice.
Well, you can. Yeah. And are we, Tim, I know a goal is to like eventually cross-reference all sorts of data and we're working towards that. But is, are we able to cross-reference that with like the Metro West survey and their questions of belonging?
Possibly. But these particular questions on belonging, I don't know where it aligns very well with the Metro West. Do you want to tell them what the questions are here?
I mean, it's very small here. So you're not going to be able to see the questions. But the questions are on this graphic. At the very top is each question, the three questions. We knew that there are other questions that could have qualified in the belonging category that were asked under like awareness or under like climate, school, school climate and this and that. So we're like, that's actually a belonging question. But we knew that last year, using another company, with this year, we in-sourced our own house. We had brought our questions in. We kept the same questions, but we were able to take the data this year and say, okay, let's just keep it apples to apples. So we can compare last year to this year.
And so the questions are things like, not necessarily how they feel about themselves in the class, but...
Yeah, the one, like one of the, like one of the questions here is, oh, I can't change this slide. But the first question, I can read what the question is. So the first question in this survey is, in this class, I feel comfortable sharing my thoughts and opinions. That's the question number one.
That's a blind.
If you go to the next slide, I'll read the next question. So the next one is, in this classroom, I notice, I notice and compliment when others do a good job. And then the last question is, I listen and respect the different opinions shared by my classmates. So.
So I don't know if those questions really get to belonging. Do you know what I mean? So where some of the other ones will. So we have some work to do on, on the other questions. What can go into that? So that's why I was saying, I don't know if we could cross-reference it.
Okay.
Yeah, the company that we, the company, the company that we used through line last year, that we used the past three years, they categorize these questions under belonging. But like there's other questions in the survey that are in different categories, like awareness saying, you know, my teacher really, really celebrates where I'm from. Or my teacher, you know, really likes me in their classroom. Like, like those are sense of belonging questions in our opinion, but they're just under a different category.
Got it.
One of the other things too, did you mention high school? Did I just miss that at all? You didn't mention the high school, did you?
No.
I don't think you did. So at the high school last year, what was very common practice is there was a class chosen. So, okay, if you're in an English class, this period, you're going to be taking this, you know, the survey. We modify that this year. So now it's by homeroom. So it's a more question about the school rather than just the class that they're in. Because many of the questions that were answered were based on, well, I'm in this class, so it must be how I feel about this teacher and how, you know, with these kids right around me. Whereas now it's homeroom. So it's more so the whole school. So it's not exactly apples to apples either. So.
That's an entirely different ballgame.
Yeah, yeah.
Because in your win room, it's just alphabetized. It's not content level. You're only in win two times a week, not four times a week. There's a lot of variables there.
Yeah. So we just wanted to get a good feel for the whole school though, and not just, you know, certain parts of it.
Yeah. And as we move forward, speaking to like the data desegregation and analyzation, not only we can pull it by school, we can pull it by grade level, we'll be able to pull it by demographics. So, you know, which, which races or maybe gender and all the other, all the other things to see how it's parsing out. And principals can really take a look at it and think about, you know, how to move forward.
Okay.
Yeah. But it does, like the question, can we do more, right? So make kids feel like they belong.
Nothing that we've reduced in the technology budget impacts our ability to do this, right? That was just the thought exchange.
Right.
That was just the thought exchange.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the only thing that would restrict us from is if principals decided they wanted to use that instead. But that tool is very dynamic and I don't know what would be good for kids to use that that way. So.
Yeah, we purposely forecasted this budget crisis. And so we, this year started bringing everything in-house so we can make sure that that doesn't hurt us.
Okay.
Desire dot com number two talks about student support and sense of belonging. So we also wanted to say that if we do some of these things, we're also going to get better attendance rates. And so we wanted to show, we didn't pick a number to target, but we, we know that DESI does give each school in the district a target. So we just left that kind of blank and we never decided on it, but DESI was going to give us targets. And a couple of things that we did to combat some chronic absenteeism is, we do have six family liaisons hired in the district. Ms. Bourgeois oversees that team and she does a really good job with them. It meets them bi-weekly to ensure that they are supporting principals and that they are more than just translators, but they're actually reaching out some families and doing some family work. In reducing chronic absenteeism, this is, there'll be a caveat here. As of May 8th, which is, you know, last week, the high school would actually meet their DESI target except for chronic absenteeism because they were asked by DESI to go from 25.4% to 24%. And they're actually at that target now, but we have three or four more weeks of school and we have kids that are 17th day absent and 16th absent. So that number may change, but, but we don't know. It's a wait and see game. So that's TBD. But as of right now, it's a celebration. So we actually met the target, which means on the accountability report, you would get three points for that, three out of four points, which is something to celebrate. And then we went from high school to all other schools. That's the way DESI reads their system. They go one through eight and then they do high school. They have two different systems for chronic absenteeism. And so for our grades one through eight, we are crushing it right now from 26, 23.6% down to 18.6%. With the caveat that there's a lot of students right there that have 17 absence, absent days. And if you get to 18, that's when you fall into chronic absenteeism. So, so the kids that are 16 days absent, 17 days absent, they got four more weeks to kind of try to make sure they, they're not missing school. And so I expect that number to change by hoping that doesn't change a lot. So, you know, time will tell. But it's definitely something we could celebrate because we all know that chronic absenteeism is very, very challenging for most school districts. And we are doing a good job every year of keeping on decreasing. So.
And as Dr. Gallagher said, DESI doesn't care if it's medically excused.
They don't care. But if they have a homeschool plan.
The law is absence. And DESI doesn't differentiate between any of those.
As I say, I'm going to play devil's advocate and ask, you know, do you feel like our schools have been less germ factories this year with people actually more willing to keep their kids at school for, I'm just curious because I really do feel like since COVID, there's been kind of a shift in mentality that if like my kid's sick, my kid's sick and they're staying home. I'm, I grew up in whatever Gen X, go to school unless you're like bombing on your shoes on the way to the bus. Like it's, because I used to get the question, are you sick? Yes, I need to stay home. Okay. So while you're home, clean your room, do the dishes, you know, walk the dog. I'm like, I said I'm sick. Now go to school. You know? So I really do wonder if there's, if we feel overall that there's less spread of crap.
Well, what I can tell you is that Dr. Munoz, Mr. Mandian and I visited every school last week and shook every hand at every staff member. And I didn't get sick. So something happened.
Knock on wood.
Not just every staff member, like went to food services, went to custodial, like we went to almost every room in the building, each building.
I'm not, I'm not advocating for people to like, you know, be absent as many days as possible. I just, I really do feel like there's a shift in mentality ever since COVID of just like, no, my, my child's sick, they're staying home.
There is. But 18 days is 10% of the year, right? So you can stay home for 10. She'll stay home for more than, for 18 or more, right?
All right. There you go.
So.
If your kid home, if they're sick, 10%, that's your cutoff.
I'm sure there are a lot, a lot of variables that go into this and that definitely could be one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, next slide. Investment and resource allocation. So Dr. Luff, why talk a little bit more about this because this was him and Mr. Mandian kind of headed up some of this stuff?
Yeah. So this was the, the first one was the task force, really based on the efficiency regarding human resource matters. And I will just say that our partnership with HR has been awesome. We have done an amazing amount facilitating kind of how we're hiring and the hiring process. I will tell you that between the three folks that are working with us, there's been a significant and awesome kind of posting system, recruitment system, helping with job descriptions, post, all those pieces. The blurbs coming out for the candidates, like everything's coming from HR that way too. So they're really doing their lion's share of the work in helping us recruit. And the hiring process, helping us with investigations quite a bit, working with our student service department, ensuring that our staff student investigations are done and upgrading that process. You see, you saw the town meeting article that also went through, by the way, that was passed Monday on the human resource recruiting and management system that will allow all this like work that's been done by hand and it's just to be seamless now where we can post jobs, staff members can, or potential staff members can apply right online. That application system goes through, we can review it all there. We interview and then from there, if we hire, we'll go right into the system, which ties into UNIS and then all the way from beginning to end. And so that's something that was a work in progress that we all were part of as, as part of that, which is fantastic. And they're doing a great job. We are having a staff recognition ceremony on May 29th, May 29th, 3:30. We'd love you all to be there, by the way, where we're going to be recognizing all of our retirees, anybody that's retiring, whether you're a teacher or you're a custodian or you're a school nutrition. And we have awards for them. And we are, we're also recognizing our teachers who are becoming PTS, our professional teaching status, with certificates for them. So it's going to be a fantastic ceremony. But HR has been vital in kind of worked through that process, right, to help us with, with the program and the invites and all those. So there's just a lot of work and collaboration that's been going on. I think I'd love to see kind of, you know, in the future, you should know what they're doing for us, kind of a guide, you know what I mean? So, so people know. So if I'm not in this chair or these folks aren't in this chair, that they, we have that kind of process later. Not in MOA, not in the thing we're reading.
No, no, but that is what I think we need. I've been saying this for a number of years.
An MOA?
It is a conversation that we have had.
Around?
With the town.
Around an MOA or a guide or?
No, an MOA with the HR department. Because it kind of happened by accident.
Yeah, the consolidated, I thought it was actually kind of interesting when they mentioned that at town meeting, consolidated HR. I'm like, because it was never actually officially consolidated. It just kind of.
No, it wasn't. It happened very differently than the joint facilities.
Yeah. Oh, my God. Yeah.
And even last year.
And it hasn't been working, like it had, but like to, so far, like, and so I understand what you're saying.
But part of the strategic plan before you, Mr. Luff, and even before you, Dr. Munoz, before you, Mr. Mandian, it was, it was in the strategic plan under this 1.3 and 1.5 to work on an MOU, MOA with the town on human resources. So I still think it needs to be done. I don't know if I'm the only school committee member that feels that way still. Especially as we get into budget decisions, that may be hard. We should have some say over what is staffed in the HR department, just like we do in joint facilities.
In terms of, especially how they support us and how many.
And how they support us and staffing. Because last budget cycle, well, what we're currently in for FY25, you know, Anne Marie and I were able to bring to BBC that we thought HR needed an additional staff member. And then they got it. And it's for school and town. But that was largely a school committee point of advocacy that we brought to the table. But we don't have like the same oversight, nor do you right now, that we do with joint facilities.
I mean, I will share that, you know, the, the work of the HR department, I feel like I've been guiding that work up from my level and just about everything they're doing for the school. So I don't, the oversight part, I, I'm not evaluating. I'm certainly working with Mr. Mizuko on, on feedback, is the question, on the HR department, how they're doing, including the individuals there. And I'm guiding the work and I'm identifying when I need those folks to be in our, in our system. And, and they are responding to that. So it's been good that way. So I, you know, as of this moment in time, I don't see need for an MOA. I do would like to guide, see how, how it works, right? And if that's just a generalized agreement on how that works, that's, that's fine too. Because as you know, and as you said, if things change, who knows how that goes. So I do understand why you're, why you're thinking that way. It's been a great partnership so far. Don't forget about the recognition ceremony.
May 29th, 3:30. High school at Tarif.
Okay. The next one was about budget. It was really about getting together and analyzing resource allocation practices and proposing recommendations with the goal of achieving plans or scenarios for the FY26 budget. I'll be darned. We have an FY26 budget that's been developed, which is fantastic. Hopefully it, you know, follows through tomorrow, that it goes there with the town meeting. You've seen the Warren articles. These are all, you know, Mr. Mandian worked in collaboration with, with our county partners in this, did a lot of work on a weekly basis with them on even the, on the planning of the budget itself. Obviously, you know, we've worked with our BBC incredibly well and our FinCom and really trying to pass our budget. So that's, it's been there. You've seen the bids for contracts and transportation. You'll be voting on them tonight. I'm sorry, the transportation of school nutrition. You'll be voting on them tonight, which is fantastic. And then do you want to talk about school finance meetings that you've had?
Yeah. Monthly, my office, we meet with our counterparts. We've been doing monthly meetings since December, I think. And we meet with our counterparts in the town finance. There's a town finance meeting weekly that I attend, but then my, my assistant business manager and myself, we meet with the, the tech director of finance and his assistant. And we just talk through ways that we could streamline things, things that might be improvements that we can make to our processes. And we have some actions that we're hoping to take, to do. So it's been a good process.
And although difficult, I think the budget process was very well done this year, I think, altogether by all, all sides, all sides. The final one was around the middle school initiatives and staffing, resource allocation and so on. And I will just focus on the middle school here. We've had five meetings of a task portion, I can't handle for middle school transition. So these are internal folks really talking about what we needed for, for the middle school transition, whether it be the curriculum or the staffing or all those pieces. And I'm happy to say that through all that process, we've now made all transfers outside of just the paraprofessionals, really for the middle school staffing, which is fantastic. Obviously, we have the budget to pass tomorrow. That should finalize that piece. Paraprofessionals, I believe, will be notified by the end of May, both where they will be located, including if they're transferred to the middle school, as well as get their reasonable assurance notification. So they'll get them at the same time. Typically, reasonable assurances of jobs for the next year, which require for unemployment purposes happened in early May. And then it's not until June that pairs are typically notified. So we're going to try to do that together. So we should have all that set. The leadership team worked really hard this morning on that. So we should, we're almost there. Leadership structures are complete over there at the middle school, which is fantastic. We've identified new positions, budgeted for, and are recruiting those new positions right now. You've seen the process and timeline for moving all the staff and the belongings. You've seen a presentation regarding programming and transitions. The fifth grade schedule is now relatively complete. Curriculum and grade reporting recommendations have been made. And you talk, you've heard about the special ed program identified. So there's been a lot of work in collaboration with that team. And this is just one of many teams that have been held to talk about middle school transition. You know, we have our Thursday building meetings, weekly, we have a bi-weekly transition meeting with our folks at Vertex. And it's just been so much done for, for the opening of the middle school. So really excited that it's working out. And then you have, I'm not going to go through these, but you have the updates from the school improvement plans, just for your, for your review. Each, each school is in that folder. That is a, I think that's my drive. I think I have to share that with the school committee, but you, you have access to that to take a look at those improvement plans, updates for now. We'll take any other questions you have. We'll take any other questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Luff on the strategic plan update? That we didn't cover during.
There's clearly been a lot of work going on. Thank you very much for all of it. For the SIP updates, are those going on the website?
Have we placed them on the, on the website before?
Yeah.
We can do that.
Okay, and if we review them and have questions, just email you or?
Email me, and what I'll do is I'll, when they, because you'll, you'll also get the, in a similar fashion, you'll get the school improvement plans, so we can take a look at them before July one. But then when they're presented, I will send any questions to the principals before, so they can make sure that those questions are answered in the presentations that go through.
Okay. And are we intending to keep the format the same for the next round?
Yeah, we actually talked about that, you and I talked about that, we're going to try to keep the same format for now.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. And there'll be one-year improvement plans at each school, is the idea. So everybody will have a one-year goal, whether you're me, or administrators, or whatever. So I want to keep the cycle going with whatever the initiative is for that year.
And that's a permanent shift going forward, just one year?
That's what I'm shooting for.
Did you talk about that at the last meeting? I'm sorry, I wasn't here.
I think we talked about it last meeting or two ago, that we actually went through the, the law, we actually kind of dove into it, and it actually does say one.
It does say one year, but our policy audit, we changed it to two, and MASC said we could, as long as we got the update. That was the vice versa.
Yeah, so I think it, I think the discussion was to.
I, I would like it to be one year, just because if, if we're, if we're deciding on something new, some new focused thing for the district for, for the year, it should, that should lead for me and for the, the schools, and for the principals, and for everybody to have that one year, one year set. With that data all being reported out in a similar fashion, you know what I mean, at the end of the year, so.
So that may require.
Policy.
Some policy, minor tweaks to that policy, just to.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
I mean, maybe up to two years or something, just to cover us and allow us to have the two years.
To allow us to have that flexibility.
We get to a point where we feel we're comfortable with that, but I mean, I wouldn't want to ham us in, but that'll come to the policies subcommittee.
Okay.
I have just one question, and maybe this isn't totally related, but as I look at the strategic plan, the number one, and I know we're collecting DIBL's data because that's part of a law that was created, and the goal is to create innovative instruction, personalized learning, what kind of training do you have right now around dyslexia training for teachers? Because that could really help with those scores, the more professional development you have around that.
Yeah, do we have any science of reading stuff in the PD calendar for next year?
We don't have any specific content in yet, we're working with principals to create some of that content. We all know that obviously we're doing corporate learning for student engagement, and then we were thinking about PLCs and what the PLCs are going to be like, so that's obviously half our meeting times next year, so. But I can check with student services department to see if they have done anything around dyslexia training that we can maybe bring to the whole staff.
Yeah, we do have multiple, we, we, actually, when we did the assignments, we did the transfers just recently, we made sure, some of the transfers that we did were based on making sure that we either ordred Gillenham or Wilson trained teacher in every building. So that's, that's one. Now, that's the special ed side of things though, right? So one of the things that we really need to focus on is how to catch kids early, so use their understanding screeners when we're screening for dyslexia or symptoms of, right? Or whatnot. And then what interventions we're putting into play early too. So the work has to happen around that. So I think with the PLC leaders too, like giving them the, the ability to plan what that PD is based with their, on their expertise, it's going to be a huge part of that. But I, I'm sure, and I would be very surprised, and I haven't really delved deep into it yet, if we haven't had training with our literacy folks on that at the elementary level. But it's something that we'll bring back to you with more detail at some point.
Some of that's the grant that Stephanie has, right?
We have a couple grants, but yes.
The early literacy grant?
Yeah, the early literacy grant is going to help us with, we're doing a needs assessment that we just finished. I think there was a lot of people, a lot of teachers, a lot of administrators, a lot of district personnel that Desi's contracted company, TNT spoke to, and so conducting needs assessments, so that way, based on the needs assessment, we are going to apply for funds for next, for the next three or three to five years on what Norwood needs based off of the assessment, which could be, we don't have a strong enough, and it's, and it's actually circled around MTSS, which we're, we're actually meeting this Friday. We've been meeting all year with the reading specialists, I don't want teachers and interventionists, to create a more aligned district entrance criteria and exit criteria, so how we're seeing students, how we're, how we're, how we're servicing in tier two, how we're serving, servicing in tier three. Because I think every school has kind of had their own system. And so if we're creating a comprehensive school, a school or district-wide system that will help us norm around things just like that, and then hopefully the needs assessment will come through and say, okay, here's actually more stuff that you guys need, and without having to hit our budget, the grants will help pay for that.
That's great. All right, any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for that update. So we will move on to the next item, which is a school committee goals update. So in your packet, and I know I literally just linked it. Because I was, I apologize, I was looking for the signed version that had the letterhead, and I don't have a digital version of that. So I just linked in the original Google for, Google doc that we had worked on. So more of a check-in to see where we are with this, and just kind of verbal updates on where we're going. So I'll definitely start with the first part, so the improved community engagement, our first goal is making materials available online ahead of meetings. This is still, it said it by end of March, we have definitely blown past that, but it has not died. So I actually just spoke to Mr. Luff about this as late as last week. And we are going, actively planning on getting a meeting on the calendar with Mr. Kidd, so that we can see how this, because that was always kind of the thing, is making sure this can be done in a secure way, that isn't going to open up any of the rest of our systems or go drives to anybody outside. So still in progress, and I don't want anyone to think that we let this one kind of quietly die off a cliff. We are, we are, we are still actively working on it. And hopefully, I'm, I'm hoping that by the end of the school year, by the end of June, we'll have that in place, so that we can at least have it ready for the next cycle, and we'll be ready to go with that.
And would it make sense the webpage too?
Yeah, so you actually should have gotten an email, I think I got one from Lisa Luff, or, no, maybe, check her email. I definitely got one to update my information on the, on the school committee page. So I will double check with her where she is with that. So obviously Judith, you're new, so that would be new anyway. But mine's been blank for five years.
Yeah, I didn't get anything from her.
Um, maybe because yours is fairly, but if you, because yours is pretty complete up there, but.
We can change it. I'm the only school committee member on the website.
Yeah, and my name's there, but there's no.
It's me and four people who haven't been on the school committee a long time. In the picture.
There's no photo, and there's no description. Yeah, I think it's a good time, I can at least have mine up there for a whole year before the next election cycle.
I think Morris.
Yeah, so I think that should have, if you get, if you do get one, and you don't have information up there, please do fill it out. Photo blurb, and just so people can have an idea of who we are and what we do. I think it was kind of interesting when Teresa said tonight, because we're learning a whole lot about you. You know, it's like, I gotta put some of that stuff on the webpage. Proud student of current super, is current principal of the Heisman, you know. Original Moen Madrigal, you know, the whole thing, I just gotta like throw it all out there. I'm just gonna write, does Anne, Anne, Anne? All right, so that, I think though, if we all do get an email from her and fill it in, we are good to go by the end of June with that one. So make, please make every effort, if you see that, to do that. The third, second goal was for each member to meet with Tim at least every other month, for the reasons listed here, and obviously by the end of June, because that was the end of her cycle. As chair, I meet with Tim every week, so I've definitely hit that in a ballpark. But I hope everybody, I'm not going to ask for your verbal confirmation, because I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I hope people have been actually doing that. And for Judith, you're being new, please do feel free to set up meetings with Tim.
And there's been great conversations with all, all members. And just as a reminder, I'm still, once a month, have a monthly meeting with me if you want. I actually encourage it, just to kind of give me whatever you need, because it's really easy to have a lot of stuff built up and not, you know, not have the time to share it with me, and I love the individual feedback, so if you haven't met Priscilla or don't know Priscilla, she'll get you on there too.
So I think I would call that, that we're on track on that one. Policy, the goal there was complete a policy subcommittee guidance document by the end of March, that was hit.
So Joan and I, we're supposed to make some slight edits and then bring it back, but I was not able to go to the last policy meeting. So I, we don't have another one set up, do we?
We do, we do not.
So we probably need to set one up.
Guidebook was largely that.
Yes, yes, I would say it's like, almost like ninety-nine percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it just was a few tweaks and a final vote.
Yeah.
So absolutely, I would call that.
What, what did you call it, document, no?
A policy subcommittee guidance document, yeah. And then the last one was for the budget subcommittee, was to also complete a budget subcommittee guidelines handbook, which Teresa did mention earlier during the budget sub, uh, update, that is on track, as we did say by end of June, so.
I thought I told you all end of May.
Well, you might have, but this says.
I, I will take it, because I was asking you to move it to that.
Exactly. So, so we will be well on track if we can get that presented by the end of May, and then hopefully if there's any tweaks, final vote in June, and we'll be on track for everything. So I think we actually did a pretty good job this year of actually keeping our goals manageable, very finite, would it, would it, smart, right? Smart goals.
Wicked smart.
Like I said, smart goals, I think David inwardly died a little, but. And any questions on the school committee goals? Great, all right, then we will move right into the next item, which is the MSBC update, and I'm going to hand that over to Mr. Luff.
Yeah, I can do that. Okay, so a few things about MSBC, so we had our last meeting on, on Monday, this last Monday, a couple updates here. First of all, we are under budget and on time, which is what you always want to hear, and we're looking forward to the school opening. We did vote against a, a process where we would get ideas for how much a, the roof screens would cost. So it would have cost us about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars or so to be able to actually get the architects together to do all the work, to identify how much the roof screen would actually cost. So we pretty much shut down the whole thing at MSBC last Monday, so there will be no roof screens. So I will tell you the cost would have been around a million dollars or so, or more, we don't, we're not sure of that price. So that was something that I think was important to, to give you an update on tonight.
What's a roof screen?
So at the top of, the top of the building, there are, there's just equipment, air equipment up there.
Oh, again.
Roof boxes kind of thing, so they, they're somewhat of an eyesore, I think, if you were somewhat, but. So there was, at the beginning of the plan, there was neither there'd be screens that we placed in front of them for views, and it won't add to the plan.
And I think that was just for, like, roof four, right? The roof on.
It's mostly because you can see down onto roofs.
The other ones, some of the other ones have it.
Yeah, some of the other, well, the lower ones have it, the upper, yeah, they don't as much, yeah.
Thank you for saving money.
Well, that was just, that was maybe we, yeah, but it was everyone. So that's good.
Do you know when the next meeting is?
I can find that for you, I'll find that before we go.
I think it's the second Monday of June, whatever that is.
Yeah.
It might be in the school committee calendar already.
So that's the roof screen.
So that, yeah, the ninth, I think.
Those conversations about the walking path, really trying to figure out the different ideas and different ways to get the walking path to work. There's some more expensive ideas and some less expensive ideas, so that's going to come back. The outdoor space, which is very cool, and I'd like to bring up a picture of that if I could, this is going to come to the MSBC at some point. They're costing it out right now for how much it would cost for this project, if I can find the right one. It's here, oh, there it is. So as you can see, this is the actual building, the top is the, the front of the building with the, with the right-hand piece here, this is the front door. If you get, see next to the Norwood sign there.
Kill this piece here, so if you just click down where the microphone is, it should come up.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So as you walk in, these circular objects or these ground pieces are already in place, so those are the, the patios. This is the actual entry to the, the fifth grade commons here, fifth and sixth grade commons. So kids would walk out, and they'd have the patio space with the now, now which has a cover, a kind of a, a sun shade, and an outdoor learning space here to the left, somewhat of a amphitheater sty, amphitheater style with some garden beds that are on the outside. Now, there have been some conversations about making them architectural dig sites, I will just tell you that already, which could be kind of cool. There is a, you know, this isn't quite right, I should share, there was a change to this the other day where they had to shift the basketball court to the, kind of, they flipped it a little bit. But this is the general idea of what it will look like, but it has the half, basketball court, a kind of, kind of a ball game pit where you kind of toss the ball up, and it comes down into one of those like posts, whatever.
Those are those four things.
Yep. Kind of a sentry path as well, all these bushes, and there'll be fences all the way around here. So our kids who need adaptive play will be able to be there too, and we're not, we're not concerned about any traffic coming in or out, and a lot of different bushes here. So really excited about this, there'll be some electrical out here by the amphitheater space too, so there'd be able to be the possibility for sounds equipment, that kind of stuff. So this is one of the things that we will be pricing out and then voting on. This would not start being built until after the school is done, but it is something that was a desire of the committee, I think, a while back. And so it is being moved forward as per consideration, which is great.
It was something that was unfortunately valued, engineered out in the summer of twenty-two, but then David and I, on the school building committee, just kept bringing it up over and over and over again, and then basically, Mr. Luff and Dr. Fraser were fully supportive, and we brainstormed a couple ideas, and most of them are on there, so I'm very happy to see that.
We have had an issue with our gym floor, there was some boring holes that were being done, I forget the reason why the boring holes were done, but they were done with, with too much water as they were doing it, and the water got under a brand-new gym floor. And so the middle of the gym floor, which had the Norwood sign, it was all painted already, had to be pulled up right there. So we are getting an outside person that we know to take a look at it, see what the company should do to fix the entire thing in the right way. So we have a new floor when we're, when we're complete and done, so. That was owned, it was, you know, by the, by the company that did it, so they're working on that to make sure that we have a brand-new gym floor that we're satisfied with by the time we're done. I won't show a picture of that here, but the, the final thing, the final thing that I'll, I'll, I'll share is that we have scheduled the ribbon cutting ceremony for August twenty-fifth at one PM. That's August twenty-fifth to Monday at one PM. There are some tours later on that day, so we tried to align everything, and we wanted to have the ribbon cutting prior to the school actually opening. And so that's why we chose that, chose that date. Outside of that, the school's looking great, tours have been happening, people have been in there, it's lovely, absolutely lovely.
Ah, yes, Joan?
So this has absolutely nothing to do with the school, but it has to do with the fields. Do you know when the fields will come back online? That is a very good question in the community right now.
Well, then I'd be afraid to give you the exact date, because I'm not sure, and I want to make sure I get that right before I do. I can find the answer to that, Joan, and I will get that out to all of you at some point soon.
Yeah, even if it's just summer, fall, spring, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I just, I don't know the fields well enough around it, which ones could be or might not, there's another project next door too, right by the pool, so I just want to make sure that I'm accurate with what I say before I say it. I'll find out and let people, let it blow.
Awesome, thank you.
Whatever happened, I'm afraid to bring it up. I think Teresa already knows, she's smirking.
I am, I'm doodling over here, don't ask it.
Whatever happened with the conversation about the other?
Other field.
Field.
Well, we, that's, that's a conversation for down the road, so once we know how much money is remaining in the project, there'll be conversations about what to do with that money. And at that point in time, we're talking about a year at least before that conversation even comes up. So that is something that, you know, the school committee can weigh in on, what they think that fund should be used for, the whole conversation we had about, you know, depositing it and saving it, and all those kind of things, or using it for something different. Those will be after we know how much we're actually spending on the building.
I've been, I, to Joan's point, I have also heard, I have also fielded questions from the community about that, just.
Fielded questions?
Fielded, did you like that? Did you like that turn of phrase? Because it has been definitely something, you know, and having, having coached and ran a league in this town for many years, it's, it's always like, field use is always a huge paint, pinch point.
Word to come. And did we give the next date on the next meeting?
We guessed June ninth, because it's usually second Monday.
Just confirm that right now.
Yeah, usually it's posted.
Yeah, I have June ninth on my calendar.
I didn't see it posted yet, but.
I did not have it on my calendar.
Because I usually copy it into the school committee calendar, so.
I'm pretty sure it's the ninth.
Okay.
But I also miss Monday, so if they change the date on Monday, then I.
But I also missed Monday, so if they change the date on Monday, then I.
I don't remember talking about it on Monday, so I'll post that again to you guys when you know.
I think I also didn't have this past Monday in the School Committee calendar, so I'm slacking. Gotta get Lisa on that. I'm gonna task that to Lisa to stock the town calendar for MSBC dates. I did, just as an aside, put the August twenty-fifth ribbon cutting in our School Committee calendar, so in case anybody wanted to keep track of that. I happen to be off that week, because my company does a shutdown, so selfishly, I will definitely be there for that.
Hope for nice, cool weather.
In August, yeah, okay, we'll go with that. Alright, anything else on MSBC? Awesome, alright, so I am gonna briefly start to jump over policy unless there is any, we didn't have anything, I know the policy's up to me, I don't think met, so there was not gonna be an update, but if, is there anything policy-related that we should get an update on quickly, no?
I'll defer to Joan and Tim.
Nothing now, we did most of the work at the last meeting with the acceptable use or the responsible use policy, which has been added to the handbooks and all that kind of stuff now, so.
Okay, great. So we'll skip over that and go right into new business. So we've got several items under new business, most of the things we've kind of mentioned as we've gone through the meeting. The first item under new business is the approval or the vote for the, um, why is it? Okay. My, I'm about to lose it with my Google, sorry. Every time I click on something, it doesn't want to open anything.
Mine's been very slow tonight, too.
Okay, as David mentioned when he came in, it's like his drive down, I'm like, no, I'm flying through, it's great. All of a sudden, it just decided to crap out on me. Only because I want to have this open as I actually speak. So, thanks. Hard copies, let's go, we're going analog. Alright, so the first item in here is to vote on the Title I slash Unit A MOA that is in your packets, so for everyone else joining us, we actually discussed this in executive session before the meeting and voted on this, but we need to also vote on this in public session. So, that is in your packets, and just for the public, the highlights here, do you include, so this includes the acceptance of the Title I teachers into the Unit A, into Unit A. They were formerly part of Unit Fifty, they were released from Unit Fifty, Unit A accepted them, now this part of the MOA is that we also accept that. This also, this agreement would begin on September first, twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
No, it goes, it's, this is the actual.
Oh, yeah, right, right, yeah, okay, I was like, I was reading in the wrong place, section two. Effective September first, yes, I know, I did the same thing, I was like, wait a minute. September first, twenty-five. It, we went through the entire, I'm not gonna go through every single piece, but we did go through and make sure that everything was aligned with the unit, the Title I teachers in the Unit A contract, because they are coming from a different contract. It does include a two percent COLA for the teachers, along with several other items, including several other items that came over from their Unit Fifty contract. So that is the highlights. Any questions on this MOA? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By David, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Teresa, so I need to poll, Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes five to zero. So the next steps after that would be to include this into the actual contract, and we should be.
Thank you for signing if you want.
Oh, yeah, I should, while it's sitting in front of me, and we'll pass that around, and then Joan will need to, Joan will need to pop in. Alright.
Emery, thanks for your work on that.
Yes.
And Mr. La, thank you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you to the Title I teachers and to, you know, to Jordan and at all for working on this. It was a very collaborative and easy process, it was very, very good process, and, yeah. Alright, so we'll go to the next item on the agenda, is vote on Unit A MOA, not this one.
So I can share this one, this is a quick, a quick MOA that kind of modifies the same agreement slightly for integration into the successor agreement as well. But this, in effect, makes the nurse leader stipend within that contract to be paid in alignment with department chair stipends, based on the number of staff that they're supervising in the department. The nurse leader currently has a very low stipend for the work that, the great work that she does, and as we are posting for that position for next year, we want to make sure that we update the stipendary amount, and as you already did, you voted on the job description today. The other one just changes the language about the grades, the department chairs from grade six to twelve to grades five to twelve, so that is identified in there. And finally, we have three summer program coordinator stipends that we've been paying out without really having the appropriate stipendary amount, or a piece in the stipend, we've been using the hourly rate that's been in there. So this actually removes the summer director stipend that's currently in there and replaces it with summer program coordinator for our extended school year programs, summer academic programs, and middle school transition programs, as was discussed with you with the job description earlier today, at a rate of five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-two cents, which is the thirty-three dollars an hour times a certain number of hours, that's how we came up with that stipend, for the work that they'll be doing, beginning actually in May, working with some of the hiring and pieces, as well as some of the work they'll do over the summer in debrief. That is quite, a little bit of a higher rate than we had talked about, because we added a couple hours to make sure it was accurate. But this is something that I would ask that you agree to tonight? Again?
Again, and again, we, yeah, again, we did talk about this in the executive session, so if there are any additional questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded by David, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Teresa, and I'll poll, Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, so the next item we already handled, that was the vote on the high school principal contract, so we did that, and so that brings us to the food services contract, Mr. Manion taking that one?
Yeah, so, for your approval, we already, we already had the committee vote on the award to be, the contract to be awarded to Chartwells. This was the RFP process, we are entering a new three-year contract, so, again, we use the DESEs, it's the second year of their RFP contract, or process, and the contract also comes directly from the DESE. And a large part of the contract is literally the RFP document itself, probably up to around page forty or so. Then we get the financial schedule that Chartwells submitted, which is called Schedule E, around page forty-six. Then we get their two fees that they charge, they have to disclose, there's an administrative fee and a management fee. Those are disclosed around page fifty, fifty-one. And then we get their guaranteed return, which we mentioned when we awarded it to them, it's four hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five, so Chartwells is on the books to bring that return to our school food service program every year. And then there's a lot of the required, you know, just required documents that they need to include, the addendum like the non collusion, et cetera. I'm noticing that the rating tool should be in here, that's the only thing I think I'm gonna have to add before I get their signature, we should include our scoring tool. The DESE had me upload it, but I just don't see it in the contract document, but it shows our, the individual scoring that went into the non-price part of the RFP.
Oh, for the rubric?
It may be in here, I know I had to upload it, but I don't see it, so I'll have to make sure that that's added.
Sorry, I was trying to navigate to it myself, it's being slow as molasses. Any questions on the transportation contract? I'm sorry, food services. As I look down, it said transportation, and then I, sorry, food services, we're on to that next. Any questions on the food services contract?
Emery, so they're guaranteeing the return of four thousand, three, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, and then there's language in there that if the financial return falls short of that guaranteed minimum amount, they still pay the difference to us, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anything else? Does anybody want to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second it?
Alright, and any further discussion? See none, I will poll, so Joan? Did we lose Joan?
Yeah.
Oh, there she is, okay. Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes five to zero.
And congratulations to Eli and the Food Services, School District Books, we're excited to have them back.
And, Mr. Manion, this was the first year you had to go through this whole DESI RFP process?
First year I've done it, yes.
I say yes, and congratulations for navigating that. Alright, so we'll move right on to the next one, which is also Mr. Manion, which is going to be the transportation contract, I jumped the gun a little bit on that one.
Okay, this was another similar process, although this was a bid process instead of an RFP process. Again, we went out to bid for a three-year contract, and we had, you know, we voted to, the committee voted to award the contract to Connolly and Sons, which is our current vendor. The contract, we use standard language at the top of the contract, which is similar to what we used last time. Then we include the pricing sheets that they submitted as part of their bid, and then a lot of the other types of required documents, like the bid bond, proof of bid bond, proof of liability, insurance, et cetera. And that's it.
Alright, any questions on this contract?
I asked it over email, but just to iterate, so we are anticipating needing fifteen buses, but there is language in this contract that if as we run our routes, we need more, we can add more at the per-bus daily rate?
Exactly.
Okay.
We have the flexibility to add another bus, as long as we communicate that to the contractor.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to approve the transportation contract for Connolly.
Okay, seconded by Teresa, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Judith, alright, and I will poll, Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes five to zero.
Congratulations to Connolly. Very good.
Alrighty. And as a note, we, because we did enter into this three-year contract, as a reminder, it is part of town, it is a town meeting warrant.
To go to five.
To go to five, it's being worked on us with the general government side, because they would also like to see this, and that is part of special town meeting number two, which would happen after annual town meeting, so, God willing, we will get through it on Thursday night, and we will not have to come back on Monday. We shall see, but that is something that is being championed by both sides, and just for the public's consumption, in case anybody's watching this, and I have seen, you know, arguments on both sides of this, in social media and just in person. The, you know, this is not to take away town meeting's ability to control things by lengthening contracts, this is actually to really help with our budgeting. We would, we would have been able to get much, much better terms if we were able to have even just two-year options at the end of the contracts. And so that, that is where we're going with this, just so people understand that this is a money thing with a big bunch of crunch coming, this is really something that could have helped us in a large, in a big way, and not at all trying to take away the authority of town meeting or the people in the town, which some people unfortunately feel that that's what we're trying to do, and I just want emphatically no. It is simply to save money.
I would also argue it's for efficiency, because I know how much time Mr. Manion put into the food services and have been on that RFP committee with him, it also took the time of Mr. Riley and Dr. Galligan, so it's a lot of time every three years.
Alright, so that brings us to consent agenda. I do not see any donations in our.
You actually have one.
Is there a donation? Oh, wait, no, I see it, never mind, I lied. We can do them both, absolutely, so there are two items under our consent agenda, there are the donations, and then there is the Global Citizen Project grant.
Move to accept both.
David has moved to accept both, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Judith, any discussion? Alright, I will poll, Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes five to zero.
Great work on the consent.
Pretty good, right? Alright, so that brings us next to our School Committee addenda. I will start with Joan, Joan, do we have anything this evening?
No, nothing this evening.
Thank you. Teresa?
It's the time of the year that I usually want to motion for summer, but I know at least one of my colleagues, Joan, would not, would not second that, and I know we can't, but no, it's a very, very busy time of year. I know Mr. Kerr earlier, he has been extremely busy with fine arts events, I know there's a lot going on with athletics, I know the elementary level, the grade four and grade five committees are doing lots of great things, I know there's all sorts of field trips happening, I know the Cookley's getting ready for all the grade eight events. There's a lot going on at the high school, our students have been knee-deep in AP exams the past couple of weeks. The graduating class is nearing its end, which is very sad for me, because I have a senior. But a lot is happening in the next couple of weeks for our seniors, for all of our students. It can be exhausting at times, but it is also very exciting. And as a School Committee, it's also a very busy time with the additional town meeting, meetings, and everything else going on, so just sending out vibes of sanity to everybody, whether you're a student or a staff member or a parent, there is quite a lot going on. Also, MCAS, MCAS testing is also wrapping up, there's quite a lot that goes on in May.
Judith?
Do you have anything?
Nope. David?
I just wanted to say, obviously, for the support of our other, our colleagues on other town boards, just with some of the stuff that did get passed at town meeting or that is going to be there, I think is important, I think it's important that the conversation continues to happen, and I know we've talked about this, obviously, with the creation of a new task force and looking to, you know, really collaboratively try to address some of the, you know, structural budgetary issues and fiscal planning, and as always, I like to say that, you know, town and school budgets are apples and oranges, we on the school side are, have many more rules and regulations, and when it comes to budgets, we have a lot of things that are law, that you cannot sort of skirt, or you can't, you know, grandfather in, oh, no, when we, for instance, go to renovate this building, that's when we'll make these updates, we don't get that on the school side. We also have more accountability, where DESI expects you to account for every dollar spent in a certain place, and on the town side, not judgment, just an observation, you know, you're not audited by the state auditor every three or five years. So, you know, I think it's good to continue these lines of communication. I will say that I am, I wanted to thank our colleagues on the Finance Commission, I'm a little disappointed in the Selectmen, they did make the recommendation to reduce money, and the reason why I wanted to say this and particularly call this out is, you know, I'm excited to get into these discussions, to talk about why we had so much money this year on the town side, and, or in the reserves and all of that, but, you know, for a, you know, to only approve three hundred thousand dollars where another half a million, half a million would have benefited us, and would, you know, half a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, a million dollars, two million dollars, in a revolving fund for special ed, which is one of the budget busters, is huge, and I'm just disappointed in that, because you see how close that vote was, and their endorsement to not do that. But I look forward to having some more conversations with them and around that, and hopefully we won't have to go to a fall town meeting and ask for that. But, anyway, I want that to be positive, on the whole, that we're looking forward to that, and I appreciate that the town is willing to work with us to address it.
Thank you. I will be brief and just say, it's a long week for us, with town meeting and School Committee and, 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 but I also want to kind of echo where David was going with, you know, town meeting on Monday night was, it was great to hear people asking questions, people I have not seen before, you know, really getting engaged, I was really excited about that. A lot of people speaking, standing up and speaking in favor of our warrants, which was really, really nice to see the support that we have in the community.
A vote that close was really great to see too, that there really was like quite, quite a bit of support for this. And I understand the others who didn't because I understand where people are really worried about the, the fiscal, being fiscally responsible. And we are trying to be fiscally responsible as well. That was the idea behind the warrant, believe it or not, was to, you know, kind of upfront protect us for when these crazy things happen. And a lot of people did note, you know, mention that in previous years before COVID, before ESAR, before ARPA, it was routine for us to come back to, to town meeting and ask for more money to cover special education costs. So this is what we were trying not to do. But, you know, I was, as always, like, I'm kind of a silver lining person when it comes to that, that I just, I, I do appreciate the town engagement at all. I did want to put out a, a piece that, you know, I, I, I do, I, I do get onto social media more often than I like. I also mute it a lot because I just can't. It's, it's a lot to, to monitor and to look at. And when I do jump on and I see conversations about, you know, school things, school budget, school, anything, I just, as a reminder to folks that most of us aren't on it every day and the best source of information is going to be your administration and your school committee members. And so directly asking one of us is probably the best way to get your information. I am not discouraging discourse or a conversation on social media in any way, shape or form. I think it is the way things are done these days. But I do highly, highly encourage direct questions. I feel like sometimes there's a, an expectation that somebody's going to see it and correct it. Or, you know, we see this a lot even with other departments in town where somebody puts something on social media and is like, well, didn't the chief see this? Well, no, he didn't. And Superintendent Love certainly didn't and some of us didn't. So please, please, please reach out if you have questions, if you have concerns, if you are confused, if you think you may not have the right information, even if you think you do. You'll find that we're pretty likable people. I'm usually willing to meet for coffee if you want to grab coffee somewhere. I like to be caffeinated. But yeah, I just want to put that out there that we're approachable. Yeah. Anyway, that actually brings us to the end of our meeting. We do not need to go into executive session, which is like something I don't get to say very often. So if we do not have anything further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. By David, seconded by Teresa, and I do have to poll, I wouldn't normally if you were all here, but Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that concludes our meeting. We will meet back here on Wednesday, May 28th for our next regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00 P.M. in a hybrid format, and we hope to see you then.